On record.
Call to order, the City of Lincoln City City Council meeting of Monday, August 26, 2019. Roll call, please.
Dick Anderson?
Yes.
It sounds like it's not on.
Here.
Rick Mark?
Here.
Diane Coos?
Here.
Deanna Hinton?
There we are, here.
Yeah, now we're...
Now it's working.
Riley Hogland?
Here.
And Mitch Parsons?
Here.
Please join me in pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Let me first welcome back Counselor Casper and Counselor Hogland. You know, it was a small group we had last council meeting, but we marshaled on without you two, but we're glad to have you back.
You only made one error.
Thanks. View of the video, huh?
Did.
Good for you. All right, well, let's then do the consent agenda. Consent agenda consists of two items, minutes of the work session on July 6, 2019, at 8:00 a.m., by the way. And number two, minutes of the City Council and Lincoln County Commissioners meeting of July 10, 2019, at 6:00 p.m.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move to approve the consent agenda, which includes a regular meeting minutes of a work session July 6 at 8:00 a.m. and a regular meeting minutes of City Council and Lincoln City Commissioners on July 10 at 6:00 p.m.
Do we have a second?
County Commissioner.
Second.
We have a motion with a second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed with a nay? Hearing none. Then we have, next item is council deliberations, and this is the special assessment, assessment of costs for abatement dangerous buildings. Is there a staff report?
Your Honor, counsel, this is, this is a hearing, but it's really not a hearing. We did the required notice, letter notices to everyone who had an interest in the property, published notice to reach people who didn't have mailing addresses, and also posting of the property, and it was reposted after someone had taken it down. The, this is an assessment on a specific piece of property for improvements that the city has made. No objections or protests were submitted to the city recorder as required, so I have no protest to give you. I will say that there was a change, I know at least two counselors looked at the documentation that we placed in the city recorder's office. There was a change after going through the Minute Track process. Debbie Memoni, or sorry, Debbie Bridges discovered an error, double billing of something, so the total expenses is not $26,000 as was previous in the earlier draft. The Minute Track item and the council packet reflects, the final number is $24,840.80. There were a couple of things that were not included in the assessment, and one of those was the city manager had provided emergency housing assistance, and we've done that in the past for other dangerous buildings where we've removed people from the property. We also did not charge for the title search that I had ordered, or the news guard publishing of the special assessment. So that's a total of about $1,700 that we did not impose on the property owner. That's pretty much the report. The documentation has been available in the city recorder's office. The report has all the required elements, tells you what we spent the money on, and at this point, I'd ask that you approve the report and direct that the charge of $24,840.80 be imposed as a special assessment lien on the property. You do have the option to not do that and make it a personal obligation of the property owner, but I wouldn't recommend that. I'd always recommend securing it with a priority lien. So I will prepare, if you go this direction, I will prepare an ordinance to bring it back for you to sign at your next meeting. Also, we'll have the property owners sign an installment payment agreement, and I ask for permission for the mayor to sign that agreement, so that we can, it's actually not just an installment payment agreement, it's also an agreement for us not to foreclose. We'll require the property owner to maintain the property and not have it fall into disrepair again. So, and that's part of the motion that's at the end of the council communication. Second part. Any questions?
Questions of city attorney?
I just want to say thank you for updating the numbers. I was a little confused there for a minute, and I didn't catch it, so good for Debbie. And I don't really have any questions. I do have, well, I do have a question. So the installment payment idea, is there conditions? I mean, a list of things that he has to keep up? I mean, how do we, how do we enforce that? What's the mechanisms? I mean, what, what does it mean?
Well, basically, he's going to be required to comply with our ordinances, but probably more importantly, and there's two aspects. One is we have a property maintenance ordinance, Chapter 8, I believe, and so we'll require that the property be maintained so that it does not constitute a nuisance, but we'll also require that he take the corrective measures that the building official orders with orders to correct. Again, the building official has the ability to order you to bring something up to code. That, that non-compliance may not make the building dangerous, because dangerous buildings are, have to list, makes, there are certain criteria to be dangerous, and sometimes it's just not compliant. So he'll have to basically follow the instructions of the building official and maintain the property in a way that's not a nuisance under our ordinance, and do other things that are like, you know, keep up the property taxes and that kind of thing.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I could continue my line of thinking there, then how do we ensure that that happens? How do we ensure that he follows all of the ordinances? I doubt that he reads them. How, I mean...
We'll, we'll do inspections.
What's the participation of the city?
The, the building official will inspect the property, the code enforcement officer will inspect the property. If there's a complaint, we'll investigate, but there'll be an agreement that says if he fails to maintain the property, fails to do what's required by the building official, then we will foreclose on the lien.
Okay, I just, I want to just, I'm, okay, where I'm going with this is that I don't, I'm not sure that there's enough there, there, to make sure that that happens without it falling to the responsibility of the neighbors, once again, to keep after this property and, and making complaints and not, maybe not even knowing how to make the complaints in a way in which that will bring the compliance officer to the house. I mean, I just, and then those calls come to me.
Yeah, I, I think we'll make sure that the code is enforced.
I want to know how.
Counselor, I, I think, you know, unless you have a suggestion on how, do you?
I'm not sure, maybe Counselor...
Because I, I would offer up that this certainly has the attention of everybody in the room and in staff and city, especially the two, the building inspector and the code enforcement. And I would hope, you know, through our city manager, the direction would be given, because if it's not heightened, it certainly should be heightened, and they would, you know, we, at some point, we have to rely on the system.
Well, Counselor Parsons, do you?
You asked an idea, maybe, is possible to have, like, milestones that he has to reach, and if he doesn't, then we just take action, or is this, as it happens, we, if something else goes wrong, you have X amount of time to fix it, or is it, everything needs to be done by this point, this point, this point?
The building official has the ability to order and to place a reasonable time on the items that he wants repaired or fixed. Code enforcement process is fairly routine. We ask people to comply, and if they don't, it results in a citation. If it results in a citation, then we're going to have a violation of the agreement, and we can proceed and foreclose. That's, that's the gist of it. So it's not like it's going to be strung out. This is a pretty, I mean, we're at the end of this process, so it's a contract that we will foreclose if the contract isn't met. I'll bring it to you and tell you what happened and ask for permission to file the lawsuit.
Any other questions, Counselor?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, this is probably more for my own edification at this point, and to be clear on some vocabulary. So I take it the property is now considered habitable and people are living there?
The building official has issued a temporary occupancy with the requirement that I submit to an inspection here in the next week, and to verify that there are no issues that have arisen since the last time he was there. And, and then he's required by that same order to come in and sign this agreement for us not to foreclose on the property, so...
And then on that agreement, I, I assume it's provided he keeps up, if we, if we go with his installment payment plan, that assumes that he keeps up with the payments, and you just said, remains in compliance, the building remains in compliance. Otherwise, we can then foreclose.
Yes, and we'll have priority. That, that was the point to recommend, that you do the special assessment lien as opposed to personal obligation, so...
And that was my next question, priority. I'm not familiar with the term priority, special assessment lien, so that, that puts us ahead of a lender, the first...
Everything but taxes.
Yeah, okay. And, and then, do we know, do we still have to negotiate the terms of these installment payments, or is there a...
Well, I, I haven't written the agreement, so it'll, it'll just be, you know, pay on time, and I'd like to actually put it in the water, billing, so that it's routine. So those things, I'll, I have to get that written by the time he's ordered to come in and sign.
How do we decide? Well, yeah, I...
Is it onerous, or what's the time length, and what's the monthly payment, and how do we figure that out?
Yeah, we'll work with him, would be my answer. The importance of the lien is it's there, and we'll stay there, and we have priority. So we'll get our money, and then we'd like him paying something, so we'll, we'll work that out.
The idea is that, yes, we're imposing a lien, but that's not just to sit there and like, in 20 years, we get our money. No, we want an installment payment agreement that he has to pay back this expenditure by the city. So that's, and it, and it includes interest, and the Uniform Code for the Abatement of Dangerous Building talks about what we can put in the agreement. So I'll prepare that, and I'm asking for you to authorize the mayor to sign it, so we can move this forward.
Counselor?
What happens on the off chance he doesn't want to sign it?
Then we, there's no agreement that we don't, we not foreclose.
And then second...
And I'll be back here a lot quicker.
Is it, we just need the one gentleman to sign it, or everybody with interest in that property to sign?
Well, for sure, the one gentleman is the, the person who has the apparent interest, but I'll, I'll probably send it off to everyone else.
Okay.
I doubt that the others will do anything, because they've disclaimed any interest in the property.
Right, right. Okay, thank you.
I entertain a motion.
Suggestion motions are on page 12.
Mr. Mayor, I'll, I'll move that the city confirm the correctness of the special assessment and lien at $24,840.80, and 80 cents, and direct staff to return with an ordinance or a resolution imposing the special assessment in accordance with the abatement cost report. And do we need, are these two separate motions that are suggested here?
Yeah, let's do two separate.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the special assessment and lien. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Anderson?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Hogland?
Yes.
Coos?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
And Parsons?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And the second motion?
Sure. I'll, I'll move that we authorize the mayor to sign an installment payment and non-foreclosure agreement for the lien amount with the property owner.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Casper?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Hogland?
Yes.
Coos?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
And Anderson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, before we leave this subject, I just was remembering that this was one of the things that we talked about in our retreat when we were setting our goals for the city council, and we talked about a team effort, a team plan for dangerous buildings, and I'm just asking, I guess, to have some idea of how that's coming together, and can we just kind of have a roadmap about how we do this in the future, because this was a little clunky this time. And, and if we know what things, even if there's a list and you don't have to do everything on it, there are procedures that we have to follow, and I would just like to add one to that, which is that the, probably, I don't know if it's the city attorney's office, or, or who it would be, but to keep the city counselors in the ward in which that dangerous building order is given, to be updated continuously through the process, because I'll tell you, for this particular house, it's taken a huge amount of my time, and it's been helpful to know what the answers are. So it's not this back and forth, back and forth, back and forth, which occurred a lot on this project, so that would be helpful.
Mr. Mayor, I will include that in my report for this week.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you, counsel. Comments from citizens present? Let me, before we bring people up, let me read this. Article 1, Section 8 of the Oregon Constitution provides, "No law shall be passed restraining the free expression of opinion or restricting the right to speak, write or print freely on any subject whatever, but every person shall be responsible for the abuse of this right. Be advised, statements and comments by citizens under comments from citizens present, or on public hearings or public comment items, are solely the opinions and statements of the speakers, and are not statements by the City of Lincoln City, and do not represent the opinions of the city, its officers, and employees." And with that, we had one person sign up. Janet, want to come forward?
Thank you, Janet Knight, Lincoln City, and I appreciate the opportunity to take a moment to read a letter that was submitted by Cindy Thompson, the president of the Roads End Improvement Association, president of the Board of Directors, and this is in regard to the fireworks issue, which will be coming up later under the city manager report. And the letter was directed to Mr. Chandler, Chief Palmer, and also, I believe, copies went to the mayor and members of the city council. Following our fireworks committee meeting of July 23, 2019, at which our roads and representatives described the out-of-control firework, fireworks activity on the night of July 4, including subsequent activity on the nights of July 5, 6, and 7, the roads and area continues to experience illegal fireworks activity in our community. On August 4, shortly after midnight and again around 3:00 a.m., explosions sounding like mortars wakened the sleeping public, terrified pets, and wildlife, and created a general noise nuisance. Police were notified and eventually located a group of offenders near the beach. We understand the police confiscated the remaining fireworks and counseled the group, and counseled the group. They did not issue a citation. Then again, during the late night of August 11, early morning of August 12, illegal fireworks were launched on the beach, waking our residents and creating anxiety in our pets. We understand that you will be making a presentation to the city council on August 26. We want to again reiterate, in light of these continuing violations, that our police must take a more forceful and effective response to this kind of illegal behavior. Confiscation and counseling alone is clearly ineffective as a deterrent. Significant fines and citations must be devised and delivered by our police force to deter future behavior. These fines must be of a sufficient amount to show that Lincoln City will not condone nor tolerate this type of illegal behavior. The lack of enforcement of a statewide law in Lincoln City has encouraged a culture of illegal fireworks to persist here while other cities are working to eliminate this activity. We insist that law enforcement and elected officials act to enforce the law to end this illegal behavior and to encourage respect for the quiet and safe enjoyment of this city. In summary, we urge you, the mayor, and the city council to take the necessary steps to eliminate this illegal activity from our beaches and our communities. Thank you in advance for your thoughtful deliberation. Thank you.
Thank you. It's only the individual who signed up. If anybody else wants to come forward and have something to address the council with, now would be the time. Seeing none, then we'll move on. Oh, come on up. Thank you. Just, yes, and just your name is fine.
Sarah Brockway, Lincoln City. I was just wondering where the city is at with a dog park or multiple locations to let dogs off-leash within a fenced area.
Sure, this is a, really a time for comments. Would love to talk to you after, where we could discuss, answer questions. I'd invite you to coffee with the mayor, actually tomorrow, 9:00 a.m., my petite suites, and/or talking to Planning Commission sometime during the day, or the planning department, because there's renderings and plans for dog parks in different parks. But I can give you more detail if you want to approach us off the business meeting.
Yeah, that would be great.
Okay?
Thank you.
All right, thanks for coming forward. Anyone else that wants to come forward? Hearing none, we'll move on then. We have a public interview. So we have two candidates for the Planning Commission. If those candidates will come forward and sit up here and grab a microphone. We make this very public and expose, you know, all your past, I don't want to say.
I have no past.
You have a past. My understanding is you've both received some questions that typically we ask, and what we'll be doing is, the council will ask you each the question, so you both get to answer the same question, and then we'll end up voting after we're done tonight. There's, oh, well, there's two seats, quite frankly, two seats open, I'm mistaken. How's that?
Well, that's convenient.
But we want to, we want to hear from you anyway, so, you know, if you step on your tongue, say things bad about the mayor, you know, we may have second thoughts.
Never in public.
Okay. If you will, as you first, kind of introduce yourself, would be, be great, and since I am the mayor, I get the first question and the easy question, and that's, as you're introducing yourself, could you give us a little bit about, you know, why you want to serve on the Planning Commission? We've read your application, but that's one-liners, and you can give us maybe a little bit of your background and the why.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Have we been introduced?
Well, I'm going to have them introduced, so...
Sorry. Excuse me.
I just said that.
When are we going to do that?
We're going to do it now, right?
You might think about, you might think about city council at the next election. Marcy's, Marcy's going to go.
I'm Marcy Baker. I've lived in Lincoln City about 23 years of my life. I got a degree in anthropology from U of O, and decided to move back here, because I love Lincoln City, I love this community, and opened my own business about a year and a half ago, and one of my long-term goals, I always said even back when I was in high school, if I chose to stay in Lincoln City, I would get involved in, in community government and whatnot. So I'm at a place now where I have time, and, and I feel I've got some knowledge and experience under my belt, that I'm, I'm ready to start participating. So I, I'm really invested in the future of Lincoln City. I'm, everything that motivates me is, is the community, so, yeah, that's...
That's great. Lenny?
My name is Lenny Nelson. I've lived here in Lincoln City for about 29 years, and I have been previously on the Planning Commission and several other committees of the city, but I've been working full-time for the last 11 years, but I have finally recently retired.
Congratulations.
Okay, I have always cared a great deal about how Lincoln City is livability and its prosperity, and I have, of the committee assignments that I've had, I've always worked towards, trying to make the livability and the quality of life, and the participation of all of our community, and the prosperity of the community as a first issue.
Thank you very much. Diane, Counselor?
I don't have to do this now.
You know what, actually, I would have fouled you up, because on the list you're looking at, we scratched your number two and went to number three. If you'd do number three, it would be terrific.
What number am I? Okay, then I'm scratching number two.
Pardon? What number am I?
You'll see.
I'll ask a couple of the questions.
It'll be a surprise for you.
They got them all.
What are the top three planning issues facing Lincoln City?
I would have to say planning for growth. We have a lot of people moving to Lincoln City, and, and even more people trying to move to Lincoln City. So I think planning for that economically, housing-wise, and maybe even considering new industries and jobs, jobs that people could afford the housing we do have, is an easy solution to affordable housing. And then the environmental protection. We have such a beautiful, beautiful environment around us, and we have a great stretch of the coast, and we've got rivers and lakes and wetlands and the beaches, and making sure that the new development and growth that's happening, that that's all preserved, is, I think, very important. And a third, I would say, maybe a vision, the vision for Lincoln City and what Lincoln City looks like. I know that there's been a lot of work going into that recently, and I think having a clear vision that, that everyone in the community could identify with, that they feel a part of, and, and really encouraging that community participation in that vision.
I think the top three planning issues for Lincoln City are the affordable housing problem, and the quality of the environment around us, and the need to keep employment up and running in the city. Employment has always been a problem here, because we are somewhat isolated, and, but I do think that a livable city is one where employers were more likely to come, and employees of quality are more likely to come. So that fits into the environment, keeping a good environment for people to live in, and of course, for people to live and work here, they have to have someplace that they can afford to live. can afford to live.
Thank you.
Okay, so maybe Lenny, you want to start?
Sure.
What should the role of the public be in planning decisions?
Well, the public, in planning decisions, formal planning decisions, the role of the public is to come and testify, either by writing or in person, as to what they believe, what they think about the particular planning issue that's in front of them. When you're talking about doing regulation, then the role of the, again, of the public should be to provide input into the city on what they think should occur in the city.
Thank you. Marcella? What do you think the role of the public should be in planning decisions?
I think the public should be as involved as possible. I think that the avenues that are there are good and there are legal protections for those. But there's a lot of the public that could be intimidated by the atmosphere or, you know, feel that maybe a letter isn't going to do much and so they just don't do anything. And I think really encouraging more public feedback and education of the public as well because there's a lot of people that don't understand why some things have to be the way they are. And when people understand why, it really helps a community kind of come together and work together towards common goals.
Thank you.
Got kind of a two-part question for you. How should the Planning Commission balance individual owners' interests with community interests? And lately, we've been doing a lot of sign ordinance outreach. And if you've participated, could you describe your participation?
Either one. You go.
Okay, I'll go first. What was the first part again?
First part was how should the Planning Commission balance individual owners' interests with community interests?
Okay, the individual owners, I have a high respect for individual owners. They have a right to know what the ordinances are and what planning decisions will be made on what basis. And they have a right to rely on that when they apply for something in front of the council, or in front of the Planning Department or otherwise. It is the job of the City Council to reflect the people's wishes for the conditions and ordinances that are in place. And I believe that once they do that, people should be able to rely on that. And second part was?
The big part is, we're currently doing a lot of outreach with the new sign ordinance stuff. And have you participated in any of that?
Not this round. Last round, I still have the scars to prove that I participated. I'd probably not be real comfortable doing that again, except on a, on a less than ad hoc basis.
I, I feel that, you know, people that invest, you know, their money into private interests, they do deserve to know what's going on and what the rights are and all of that. But I think that the community interest as a whole is also incredibly important. And I think a big part of government is, is protecting those interests for the people that don't have the financial interests and for the, the less fortunate. So, you know, and this goes for, you know, people that own private homes and different VRD things that have gone on. And along with, you know, you mentioned the sign code, which would be private business owners, which I have participated in some of that. I, I did not go to the last meeting that was at the college. I had family in town and had to run business errands and whatnot, so I, I missed that. But I, I feel that the signage and the sign ordinance, it's very important that we support small local businesses. And, and when it comes to that particular thing, I'm probably in some notes or minutes in some meetings saying that I, I feel that you have to weigh an individual instance. And a comment I made about that was, there were, I think, six anonymous complaints. And then from the business owners that the planning directors reached out and spoke to, I believe they said there was one that, that agreed with that out of almost 100 businesses that they spoke to. And so, you know, I think in that instance, you kind of have to weigh this and this. And if, if people want to show up and talk and have a conversation, then that makes it a lot easier to, to come to a conclusion. But I think, you know, the rules are in place and if, if things need adjusted, that both parties can come to the table and that a consensus can usually be found.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you both for applying. It's a big job. We appreciate that you're here tonight. I have a question, which is, how should the Planning Commission, wait a second, we, we changed things around. What, what should the role of the Planning Commission be in creating a look or image for the city? And recently, we went through a process for commercial design standards, and I'm just wondering if either of you participated in that? It's too, you can, either one.
I believe I filled out the signed survey online, the one that the city put out, asking for feedback on, but I think that's.
When I was on the Planning Commission is when we started the first design standard, so I was there in, in the beginning. It took a long, long time, and I'm not sure that we were through with it by the time I had actually left the Planning Commission. But I do believe that design standards with flexibility are an appropriate thing for the city to have. Again, that adds to the livability of the city. And I actually think that it adds to the business-like atmosphere of the city. When people come and all they see is jumbledly this and jumbledly that and, and everything doesn't look attractive, then I think that people are less inclined to, to stay here and to, you know, vacation with us and to do business with us as opposed to places where they have a more cohesive standard.
And the first part of the question, if we can loop around to that, is what should the role be of the Planning Commission in creating that look or through the design standards, so?
Well, since it's normally part of the planning code, it's the role of the Planning Commission to vote them into being as approved by the City Council, of course. They might like to, and we did, have forums on what people thought they should be, and they talked to various business owners. We had business owners come in front of us and, and talk about that. But it is the role of the Planning Commission to upgrade or update the, of planning ordinances.
Marcy?
So, for the first part of the question, that's the role of the Planning Commission in creating the standards. I think the Planning Commission's role would be to, to really have the vision and, and create those standards and, and create the, the expectations and the guidelines and the outlines in a way that the community can then implement. So, the Planning Commission on its own is not going to be able to paint all the buildings in town and, and, you know, beautify the whole town. It's, it has to be a community effort. And so, the Planning Commission's role would be to make the recommendations to City Council to, for those standards that, that are understandable and, and easy to implement.
Thank you.
About, Counselor, would you take number eight?
Thank you. It was answered my question. I think we want to start with Marcy. What can the Planning Commission do to promote economic development?
I think, for one, I think the, the vision of Lincoln City, what it looks like, is a, a big deal. If we had effective park-and-walk districts, which the city's been trying to do for a while, that, that could really help the businesses that are already here, bringing in some different industries, like maybe trying to bring tech industry into Lincoln City, which makes sense because you don't have goods to move back and forth and manufacturing. So, the isolation on the coast doesn't, there's a lot of digital entrepreneurs that are already moving here because they can afford to live here. And, you know, that would be a big industry that could create jobs for people. And, there's something else I thought about that one. Maybe creating incentives for businesses that create jobs. You know, it's, it's pretty easy to track how many jobs you've created. And, and currently, as a business, if you create jobs, you just pay a little bit more for your occupancy tax permit every year. And, you know, if there was some kind of incentive, even if it's not financial, you know, maybe some advertising to the VCB or something like that, you know, that could stimulate economic development and also marketing of the businesses that are here and, and are investing in creating jobs in the community.
Thank you. I lost my question. Well, Lenny, I, the question was, what can the Planning Commission do to promote economic development?
Well, I think that the Planning Commission having clear rules, clear standards, will help people who are considering coming to Lincoln City to feel that this is a place where they can establish a business and expect to have it in ongoing businesses. That's, livability has a lot to do with it. I think people, especially people who have money and can bring bus, jobs here, want to live in a livable community. And I think that the Planning Commission has a part to play there. I don't think that the rest of it's too easy for the Planning Commission to do because they have no funds or anything to, to share with people. But they can try to make a community where people would want to work.
Number nine.
Wonderful. Last first, Marcy. So, Lenny, hi, thank you both for coming in and applying. So, number nine is, what is the role of the Planning Commission when a person has a really good idea, but the city's regulations prohibit it? And then, or a really bad idea and the regulations allow it?
I've confronted this question any number of times in my role as a Planning Commissioner. Basically, when people came to me and asked if they could do this, that, or the other, my standard answer was, if it was, if it was permitted or was not permitted, that I explained to them my understanding of what the ordinance said. But I always suggested that they go to the Planning Department because they were the ones who had the final authority on deciding what was, what the illegal interpretation of the ordinance was. Even if I thought it was a lousy idea, at least I'd send them to the Planning Department and hope for the best.
Got that, Lindsay? Coming your way. Continue the question again.
Uh, no. I think that there are times when, you know, evolution is something that's always happening. It's, it's present, it's not in the past. And, and when new ideas come to the table and the letter of the law doesn't match them exactly, if it's a good idea, then I think the Planning Commission's role would be to look at the intent of the law. And if the intent of the, if, if the intent is there and the actual wording of it is inhibiting a really good idea, then that would be the time for the Planning Commission to make a recommendation to City Council to make a change. And then just in the reverse, if there's a really bad idea, that there's some loophole that allows it and it's a treacherous idea, well, then it's probably time to update some, some wording or language. And, and my understanding is the Planning Commission are the ones that look into and understand and take the time to hear it all out with public comment before it comes to the City Council to make a decision.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Counselors. Thank you both for applying and going through the public scrutiny of, you know, having to answer questions. It's not always easy, but it provides, certainly provides us a, a better vehicle to understand what you're thinking about and that it's not just been a, a decision made on Friday to apply for the Planning Commission. So, thank you both. Kathy, process, still do a, a vote? Is, or a motion? What suggested, Counselor?
I think you have two vacancies, you have two applicants.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'm, I'm just reviewing the potential motions. Is one of these seats for a year and the others?
Oh, I guess there is some term. Yeah, one, so we'd probably need to tie, in a motion, a term to each motion?
So, one of these is really only for four months?
Yeah, somebody's going to have to come grinded.
Grilled again?
Grilled, yeah, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Could I make a motion?
Please.
I move to appoint Marcella Baker to the Planning Commission for the term expiring 12/31/2020.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to appoint Michelle Baker to the Planning Commission with the term of 12/31/2020. Can we do a voice vote? Or a roll call?
I'd do a roll call.
Roll call, please.
Hinton?
Yes.
Hoagland?
Yes.
Coos?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
And Casper?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Can we vote for a longer term to expire 20, 12/31/2020 for, are we required to do for four months or can we make a longer appointment?
Well, you mean the second. The first motion was for 2020.
Correct.
If you're gonna, you, I think Kathy was about to say that you could extend it and make it for four months plus the next term. You could do that with both of them, I think.
Okay.
Yeah, you're.
You changing the rules? Serious. Are we changing the rules? We tried to do this before and we weren't able to, so.
Yeah, I, I'm not familiar with that, but I know that if you make a motion for this term ending 2019, then you can make a second motion if you don't wish to put the applicant through the process again. I don't know of anything in the, in your rules and procedures that prohibits it. There is a term for Planning Commissioners, for, it's a four-year term, but it, you're allowed to serve more than one and our term limit isn't really much of a term limit. So, I don't see any reason why you couldn't do it.
So, it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
May I make a motion to appoint Lenny Nelson to the Planning Commission for a term expiring 12/31/2019?
Oh, sorry. Try, say that again?
One motion, 12/31/2019.
Okay.
That's one motion.
So, second?
Second.
Second.
We have a motion. Diane?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Did Diane have a question?
No, she, I was just, second, she seconded.
Can we amend this motion to include the additional year?
Or make a second motion?
I was going to make, I was going to make another.
Let, let's get this one.
And we'd have to vote twice?
Yeah.
As it's, I mean, it sounds like, you know, do this and then another instead of trying to finagle the other way.
Roll call, please.
Hoagland?
Yes.
Coos?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
And Hinton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to appoint Lynda, Lenny Nelson to the Planning Commission for her full term expiring 12/31/2012, what would be, 23? 24?
That's 2020.
This is the.
A four-year term.
Correct. To a full term.
A full term of four years.
Well, the others are dates, yes.
It'd start January, so it'd be 2004, right? It'd start January 20.
So, then, yes, the term expiring 2020.
Is there a second?
Should we ask the applicant?
Right.
Well, I'm old, but I'm not that old. I probably could do it.
I, that's what I thought, 23, that's what I thought.
23?
Yeah.
23, yes.
Is that, yeah, okay.
Is there a second for that motion?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second? Any discussion?
Well, I just questioned now, do we need to do that for Marcy's too? Because we've got it through 2020, but if it's a four-year term.
Well, if that's a motion you want to make.
I'm, I'm sorry.
How do you, if you do a term, but you only did it for a, a year and four months?
They're completing the term that's vacant. This is a vacancy.
Two people vacated terms that end on these dates that we're filling.
So, there's one term that's vacated that, that's ending this year and there's another term that's ending, there's one vacant seat that is ending this year, there's another vacant seat that's ending next year.
Right.
And, and I, I think the thought behind it is four months is a short time versus a, 16 months is a longer time to not, be not abusing Marcy's time coming back. You know, she's, we saw her last, we saw her last meeting. So, it's a motion with a second to extend the term on Lenny Nelson for a four-year term, starting in January. Roll call, please.
Coos?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
And Hoagland?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I thank you very much.
Again, thank you both. And I think, is there a com, commission meeting tomorrow night? Oh, next, I was going to say reported.
It would normally be next.
There is like a boot camp at 6:00. There is like a boot camp at 6:00 AM. Report to...
Well, that's not going back to work. Hello.
Report to Lindsay.
Right after I get off work. That's no problem.
Thank you. If you haven't met Lindsay, please do, and welcome on board.
Lindsay? Who's Lindsay?
Lindsay, right there.
Lenny, your way.
Behind you. He's at the door.
Nobody told me who Lindsay was. Thank you very much for...
All right, thank you both. All right, we now have a public hearing. This is a public hearing on ZOA 2019-05. And I know Kate said she was gonna print out a script. All right. If I can call to order, it is now 6:51 PM. The public hearing for file ZOA 2019-05 is now open. This public hearing concerns a city-initiated proposal to adopt FEMA's new flood insurance rate maps. In addition, the proposed ordinance will amend Title 15 Buildings and Construction, Chapter 15.16 Flood Damage Prevention, to strengthen development standards in the 100 Year Flood Plane. The proposed amendments include definition changes and wording to make the code more congruent with the state's model code. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on this matter on July 16th and forwarded a recommendation as outlined in the council communication. The city council's role in this legislative process is to consider the Planning Commission's recommendation, any written or oral testimony, as well as information from staff, and make a final decision as to the ordinance amendments or new ordinances. The city council may adopt the recommendation or may take other action. The council must take a few moments to cover some preliminary matters required and required statements. Does any member of the council wish to declare a conflict of interest in this matter? You probably wanna say you're in a flood zone and impacted.
I just wanted to say, yeah, I... It's my understanding is that that does not constitute... The fact that I own a house in the flood zone doesn't not constitute a conflict of interest, but people might like to know that that's the case.
Thank you. Anyone else? I don't think so. All right. The substantive criteria for that... Substantial criteria that apply to this hearing include the statewide planning goals, the city's comprehensive plan, and the applicable provisions of the state zoning ordinance. Comments and testimony should be directed to these criteria or to other criteria that you believe apply to the subject of this hearing. Before the staff presents a report, I would like to summarize the adopted public hearing procedures. The staff will present a report and respond to any questions. After that, any person may speak for up to three minutes. If council members have questions, your time responding to any questions will not be counted in your time limit. If you speak... If you wish to speak, please write your name and mailing address clearly on the sign-up list at the entrance. Please speak directly into the microphone and begin by stating your name only. If you also have written testimony to submit into the record, please provide a copy to the recorder. We'll now hear the staff report.
Good evening. My name's Weston Fritz. I'm Assistant Planner here at the City of Lincoln City. I got a PowerPoint presentation here for you. If you have any questions, please do save it till the end, and we can take time to answer everything. I'll try to make it brief, but not too brief. So in summary, as you just stated, staff is presenting amendments to Chapter 15, 16 of Lincoln City Municipal Code. Can you hear me very well? Including adoption of the new flood insurance rate maps as required by the National Flood Insurance Program. A work study with the Planning Commission occurred on June 4th, 2019, and the commission was in support of stack recommendations. DLCD was notified on June 11th, 2019. The public hearing was on June 25th, 2019, and a notice was published on July 3rd, 2019. Planning Commission Public Hearing was held on July 26th. No comments were provided. So there was no public comments provided at any of the public hearings thus far. We did receive comments from DLCD, the Department of Land Conservation and Development. DLCD required staff to make a number of edits since the Planning Commission's public hearing took place. These changes were regarding specific wording choices aimed at strengthening the ordinance's legal enforceability and clarity. These changes are present in the ordinance draft and printed... in the printed emails that are provided. So in the... In order to get final approval, our ordinance does have to be approved, which it has been approved by the Department of Land and Conservation and Development and by FEMA. So the intent of the code amendments presented to lower flood insurance premiums for homeowners, adopt new flood insurance rate maps, which is required by FEMA, to make structural and language changes to strengthen enforceability and communication of the ordinance recommended by staff and many of them required by DLCD, to strengthen development standards in the identified special flood hazard areas recommended by staff. So the purpose for flood damage... The purpose of the flood damage prevention ordinance, as defined in our ordinance, is to protect human life and health, minimize expenditures of public money in costly flood control projects, minimize the need for rescue and relief efforts associated with flooding and generally undertaken at the expense of the general public, minimize prolonged business interruptions, ensure that those who occupy the areas of special flood hazard assume responsibility for their actions, minimize damage to public facilities and utilities such as water and gas mains, electric and telephone and sewer lines, streets and bridges located in areas of special flood hazard, help maintain a stable tax base by providing for the sound use and development of areas of special flood hazards so as to minimize future blight... flood blight areas, and to ensure that potential buyers are notified that the property in an area of special flood hazard. These are just a couple of pictures of... Going in the wrong direction. These are just a couple of pictures of some minor flooding down over by the D River. So just a little bit of background, the National Flood Insurance Program was started by Congress in 1968 for three reasons. Reduce capital infrastructure costs, shift cost to residents of the flood plains, provide insurance options. This was all done by the Flood Disaster Prevention Act of 1973, which made flood insurance a mandatory condition of any federal-backed mortgages in the 100 Year Flood Plane. Premiums are based on development... developed performance standards and flood insurance rate maps. So just a little bit of background on some of the flooding trends that we have currently. Flooding is still the world's most common natural disaster. Forty-two percent of all... Forty-two percent of all the world's natural disasters are caused by floods. Flooding has been on the rise, especially tidal flooding. So over the past 30 years, there has been a noticeable increase in high-tide flooding days and just overall flooding. In lieu of that, flood insurance has become significantly more expensive. In 2014, President Obama had to sign the Homeowner Flood Insurance Affordability Act that capped the rate of increase for flood insurance. One option to lower flood insurance is called the Community Rating System. This is a point-based system by FEMA that cities can elect to be a part of, and this offers all policyholders within that jurisdiction a discount based on the amount of points achieved. It is action item number seven and eight in Lincoln City's Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan, both to stay in good standing with the NFIP and becoming a CRS member. This is something that we intend at looking at and going forward. As you can see, you know, if you get up into the 5%, 10%, 15% level, it can be quite a big savings for the... for policyholders. So a quick analysis of the Flood Damage Prevention Ordinance Amendments. So number one, adopting the new FER maps. FEMA does require us. We just went through the mapping process starting in 2016, where FEMA went... undergone a remapping of the coastal area in Lincoln County. So all of Lincoln County has had new flood maps. The public comment period for that is over, but now we are required by FEMA to implement these new flood maps and have them legally enforceable by October 18th in order to stay in the NFIP. So here's an example of some of the changes in the flood maps. This is the D River area. Right there, you can see the D River wayside. This is the older flood insurance rate map. As you can see, this is a V-zone, AO and AE zone. And these are the new maps. So one of the reasons they did redo the mapping is due to newer technology and more accurate mapping. You can tell in the photos that there's quite a drastic change and definitely just a refinement in the accuracy, I think, and precision of mapping these special flood hazard areas. Now, not all the parts of the city were necessarily quite this drastic in terms of the change, but overall, there's just a general refinement.
Just a clarification, can you tell us what those colors are? I'm not sure what I'm seeing.
The colors represent different flood zones. So the blue with the white dots is a V-zone, which is wave action. So those zones are susceptible to wave action over three feet. The pink zone is AE zone, which is a common flood zone, not with wave action less than three feet. And the striped zone is Zone X, which is not in a flood zone. So anywhere where you see those diagonal hashes are places outside of a flood zone. Now, as far as FEMA's rule goes, if any portion of the building is in a flood zone, then the whole building is considered to be in a flood zone. So even if you see just a portion of the building, you would be, if you had a federally-backed mortgage, you would be required to buy flood insurance.
Excuse me, could you go back to the earlier map then?
Yes.
Just so we can see again what... how it changed?
So this is the first one. This is AO zone, which is a shallow flooding zone. They don't often give you... They just give you a depth number. It's really not very precise delineation, and you can see overall, there's... Just the level of precision is a lot different, and that's the new map. So quite a lot more detail in the outlines and the different contours. So just in summary, the physical map changes that took place, there was actually a reduction in the homes that are currently in the flood zone. So we saw a 23% reduction in the amount of homes that would be required to buy flood insurance. So that is definitely a benefit. It doesn't mean that the risk is not there in those zones that are still in a flood zone, but for a lot of people who maybe were buying flood insurance previously, they may not have actually been in that risk level, so it's definitely beneficial for those people to not have to carry that insurance unnecessarily. But overall, we did see a reduction, so... Most of Lincoln County did see a reduction as well. The second goal is to increase clarity and enforceability of the language by adding new definitions, replacing definitions, adding more detail where warranted in various sections of the code, and then adding new sections altogether, such as ones on accessory structures and garages, places where you often receive a lot of questions that can be confusing in an effort to allow people to research things on their own and give more clear guidance in terms of administering the code. Now, DLCD did give... DLCD did give us a lot of recommendations. They are... They have been very strict in terms of having verbatim definitions and certain sections where they want verbatim language based on their experiences and legal issues that they've encountered in the past. So some of these were done as our own volition, and a number of them were done actually as a requirement to satisfy different organizations. Number three, floodproofing requirements for non-residential buildings. The way our code was written previously, we did not require floodproofing above the base flood elevation. Even in our current flood plane code, we have a one-foot freeboard requirement. So this... The previous floodproofing requirements for commercial buildings were only requiring people to floodproof up to the base flood elevation, and it was not taking into consideration our freeboard that we require people to go above that one foot. So we've now made that congruent with whatever the elevation standards are. You kind of have two options when you're addressing the floodplain requirements. You can raise a building above the base flood elevation. It may make more sense in the next couple of slides. Or you can floodproof commercial buildings only up to that certain point. So this was kind of an error in our code previously that we're now bringing back up to meet the same standards as if you were to elevate a building. So it's typically more dangerous to floodproof a building than to raise it above the floodwaters. So I don't think the intention was to give people a break for floodproofing in the past. We did add a section for violations, clearly defining what a violation is, what the penalties associated with violations are, what the procedures are. Helps staff quite a lot with enforcing those violations, just like anything else. Not everybody follows the rules, and, you know, there are circumstances where we need to enforce those, and having that section helps us do that. Another change was to our definition of substantial improvement in substantial damages. Right now, currently, anytime you invest over a certain value into a structure that's in the flood zone, in a special flood hazard area, it triggers compliance with the Flood Development Code. Previously, that was at 50%. So if you owned a home and you invested over 50% of the value of the structure of that home into that project, you would have to raise, most likely raise your home and come into compliance with what the flood protection standards are. And this is to prevent people from investing large amounts of money into assets that are at risk of flooding. And before, what we did is we changed the threshold to 49%, which adds a little bit... It makes it a little stricter and also makes us eligible for CRS points. And we also amended the definition to calculate improvements cumulatively over a five-year period. So one way that people get around that rule of the 50% is they come in and they do one project at a time. And so they'll do a bunch of little projects. I saw this recently, actually, a house in the flood zone. They rebuilt the entire house. They even did work to the foundation without ever coming into compliance. And now, it's essentially a completely remodel, but they did it step by step in a way that never required them to elevate it or to actually protect the home. So...
Weston, what is CRS?
CRS is the Community Rating System that was identified in our Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan. It's a point system for FEMA. Essentially, you get points based on your regulations. Having higher flood zone regulations gets you more points. The more points you have, the more of a discount that your constituents can get for their flood insurance. So it's... It is a good thing. And they give these... They give points based on having standards that protect property and protect life. Because the higher, you know, the higher your regulations are, the smarter the development is, the less risk there is. So they're able to give you a discount, and that discount is applied to all policies within the special flood hazard area. And these, something like substantial improvements and substantial damage would only be applicable to properties that incur substantial damage events or if people want to remodel, invest money into the house. So here's a little bit that kind of explains it. This is just an example, the base flood elevation. You know, this is just a random house in the city. You can see that the improvement value in 2018 was $205,140. So if this property owner, for example, invested over $122,569 over a five-year period, whether they did it in one project or broken down into a number of different projects, that would trigger substantial improvement. And in this case, this house that was previously below the base flood elevation would have been required to raise that up to protect it from flooding. There's also other requirements such as venting that they also need to take into consideration. So these records do run with the property and not the homeowner as well. Another proposal is to increase the freeboard to two feet in all special flood hazard areas. This is a good diagram. If you see the base flood elevation here at the bottom... The base flood elevation here is at the bottom. The freeboard up here, the base flood elevation is at the lowest level. Here, the base flood elevation here is here, and they've raised the home above the base flood elevation, and that's called freeboard. It's essentially just a margin of safety every time, you know, all these... The flood maps and flood predictions are just models at the end of the day, and they're... at the end of the day, and they're really just a prediction. It doesn't mean that an actual flood will be exactly like the model that we predict. So, having a higher freeboard essentially allows us to have a higher margin of safety for, either for future predictions or just the lack of accuracy in the modeling. You know, most houses, they do, when you build a house, it hopefully does last for a long time. Forty to 80 years is the average that a home lasts. And you just, we're thinking ahead at, you know, in 40 years, what are these flooding conditions going to be like when the house is in the mature stage of its lifespan? Here's an example of some other freeboards required in other jurisdictions. See, you know, some are higher. Many people are at one foot, which is what we were currently at. But as you can see, there are other places that are a little bit higher, some at two foot as well, so... Another proposal is to balance cut and fill. At the moment, we have no restrictions against placing fill in the special flood hazard area. Typically, what people do, instead of raising their home off the lowest living level of their house by raising their foundation, people will fill their property or they'll fill a subdivision in order to get that house above the flood zone, and then they will apply to FEMA to actually get that property taken out of the flood zone. And while it does help that property owner, it pushes the floodwaters onto other properties. So, any fill you add to the flood zone, it's like adding a brick in a bathtub. You're just taking up storage capacity, and that's essentially at your benefit, pushing the floodwaters into your neighboring community members. So, this would require that any fill added be balanced with an equal amount of cut, so there is no net increase, or net decrease in the flood storage capacity. Prohibiting enclosures over 300 square feet on elevated buildings in the VE zones and requiring non-conversion agreements for elevated structures. V-zones are the most hazardous flood zones. They typically can have large waves. Even the small waves can have a large impact on buildings. And the issue with breakaway walls is that often, well, the first issue is often in V-zones, people end up having to elevate their homes quite substantially, usually up like a full story, which it, what ends up happening is people end up converting, once they get done with the permitting process, 10 years down the line, you know, they end up converting that space into living space underneath the home, which is a common violation. Another issue with breakaway walls, you are allowed to use breakaway walls that break away in a flood, but those walls just end up becoming debris in the flood. So, while it does prevent the collapse of the building, you are introducing another hazard into that flood situation that could hit your neighbor's house, can damage your own house. Just essentially a float, a wall just floats around. So, it's just preventing that, those two issues from happening. That's about it.
Questions for Weston?
Weston, I had one, just as you showed some of these pictures and the freeboarding. Why the different heights? You know, one foot, 18 inches, two feet, freeboarding on different areas? Is there not a standard that the feds or FEMA or whoever comes up with?
Well, the standards vary. There's not one single standard. For FEMA, they require that you go to the base flood elevation. The state, so they just want you, their requirement is to be at the bare minimum. The state of Oregon, for a long time, required people to go to one foot above, which they've recently taken out in order to encourage people to go above one foot. So, many states can adopt their own stricter standards, but now they've been encouraging people to go more than a foot. But there is no set amount. You know, I think like places like Tillamook County, you're at a very high risk. And so, communities have the option, if they're in a riskier zone or if they have experienced a lot of flooding, to increase that even more.
I guess the follow-up question, and I may have, you may have already said it, but is this, by going this additional foot, increases the points in the, what'd you call it, the C?
CRS.
CRS?
It would, yes. Going up another foot increases points. A number of the trainings that I've been to with FEMA, usually when you're, we already have to go one foot, and usually, you know, this is always done at the time of construction. And essentially, what it works out to is you end up just pouring more concrete. And often, the forms go a foot above the foundation itself already. And so, it's actually, from a cost-benefit standpoint, most of the time, people pay off, the increased cost in going the one foot ends up being recouped in about three to five years. So, that homeowner will also get, if I'd have to look at the insurance tables again, but from what I remember, it's about a 40% decrease in their insurance rate to the individual property owner. So, it's sort of looking at the cost-benefit of that when you're doing the construction.
Other questions, Counselor?
Thank you. Incidentally, I have an elevated house down in Cutler City, and it is kind of reassuring and does give me substantial break on the flood insurance. I was curious about the notion that the, I understand the purpose of having the cumulative repairs run with the property, but I'm wondering if you're an unsuspecting buyer, do you, is there a way to know that you've bought a property that has had some repairs, some renovations, and that your next renovation could kick you into a...
Into a substantial improvement. I would hope, I mean, from our end, we don't necessarily have a mechanism for advising people beyond that. The way that it's been approved by FEMA and the way that it typically goes is that it runs with the land. You know, that's built into the definition of it. But I would encourage anybody who does, you know, has bought in a home that's recently remodeled to talk to us. But I would assume, I would hope that the buyer would disclose what renovations they have.
Seller.
The seller, yeah, sorry. In there.
Yeah, that was my question.
That raises a good question. We could ask our resident Realtor, isn't there a seller's disclosure that would indicate...
There's a floodplain advisory, right, that you would state, yeah, there is, there are forms to show if it is or not. And, you know, there are other aspects of the flood insurance, you know, if that...
But specifically, something that would indicate that seller has remodeled recently and spent X dollars somehow? Because I think, Counselor Mark, question is a good one, is if they press the limit, you know, at 48% to do a remodel, and now they're selling, and the new buyer, you know, gets surprised as they want to remodel.
Sure. You know, there are disclosures that you fill out when you're, you know, buying and selling a home and that you want updated as close to the, close of escrow as possible, you know? And so, you'll want that, you'll want them to disclose what they have done with or without permits and how, which they did it. And it's up to the buyer to say, hey, yeah, I'll take the risk, or no, I won't. And separately, the floodplain advisory and the insurance, there's a lot of, you know, pieces there.
Yeah. Counselor Mark, you are...
Yeah, no, I'm just, I mean, it's to your advantage. I mean, the whole idea, I was trying to refresh my memory on what the whole point of this was, and it is to require that property to come into compliance with the new code.
Well, actually, the way my understanding is, it's a multi-step. One, we approve the maps, and with that is the premiums. But if we want to provide for our citizens a reduced premium, then we start making some of these changes that Weston has and staff has suggested.
Which, as I understand it, are basically required by the program, the flood program.
Well, I guess I would say it's more of a three-step, three steps. One, the number one thing we have to do is adopt the maps. That's, we have to do that in order to stay in the National Flood Insurance Program. The second step is to change, to also have a legally enforceable ordinance. So, that comes into a lot of the language issues, the definition issues. Those are not necessarily references to the higher standards that are proposed. But the other, you know, the higher standards come into play both into, you know, I think the discount is a great benefit, but the main point is to protect human life and to have resilient communities and to have people who may have older homes that they didn't take into consideration the flood insurance market or the risks 70, 80 years ago associated with building in that situation. The goal is to help mitigate that risk, you know, for the purpose of having a stable tax base and a resilient community.
But I would say, city could not, we could change this to one foot or rather than two foot.
We could leave it at one foot, yes.
But by going two feet, we gain some extra points, which causes further reduction in premiums for the community.
Yes, but I would say that the extra points is sort of a side benefit to the protection of human life and of...
Yeah, but I think it's an important one. I guess that's...
And we're really talking about a long-term change, because we're talking about new construction. There are a lot of houses in Cutler City, the big example, that are not, you know, that are at the lower level.
Well, rehabbing though.
But if, well, if they're rehabbing or just torn down and replaced with a new, or manufactured, we've had a couple of lots where vacant, where manufactured houses have come in and they've all been built up. So, yeah.
It is a long process. It is kind of on an individual level, one by one, you know, over time, hopefully, that people be, you know, build safer and eventually, people will be in compliance with that.
Rick took my question.
Oh, okay.
I did just want to comment, I was just puzzled by the change from the 50% to 49%. Just seems like an odd...
That is for CRS points. And it makes it a little bit stricter.
Such a minor change.
Yeah, well, the five year is new, though, right?
Yes, five years. That is a...
Yeah. Yeah, I just want to see this against the House Bill that was recently passed about it, the new build, you know, how they're able to build and the critical buildings and how do you think...
That was public buildings, though.
Those are substantial, I mean, it's not the same.
Yeah, that was regarding building critical facilities in a tsunami zone.
Only for that?
Yeah. I will point out that the flood zones are pretty similar to what you would find in a distant tsunami zone. So, there is sort of the, you know, a tsunami is a type of flooding. It's a very rare type of flooding, but it is a type of flooding nonetheless.
Counselor, any, here, any questions? The other, if I can, as you're doing this, and it comes to mind, we have height limits. So, in theory, the way I'm reading this is we just eliminate the first floor living unit. So, should we, as a community, you know, allow a higher height limit on residential in Cutler City to pick on an area?
You, that could be an option. We haven't explored that option at the moment. I think the height limit in Cutler City is 35 feet. Majority of the town has a height limit of 35 feet, which is pretty tall. And it's really, it is really site-dependent. You know, currently, we already do require a one foot over the base flood elevation, and this would be raising it two feet. So, you would be, you would be eliminating a potential for a foot of building height. You know, from a design perspective, I don't know if that's, would have a large impact into people wanting to build. But there are some sites where you do have to raise it to the point already. If you're, if the flood zone is five feet above grade and then you have to go two feet, I mean, that's where you start getting into, into things like this, where you would absolutely lose a floor if it is that high.
And it's been, the commercial, commercial zones, commercial buildings would have the same, and they have limits too on the commercial.
On height. Commercial buildings also have the added benefit of being able to be floodproofed. So, floodproofing, you can do that without adding height.
Okay.
So, that's one thing to think about.
Oh, I just want to mention, I might be the only one who actually looked at the maps to compare, because, you know, I want to know where my house was. And it looked to me, and I'm not sure if I was reading it right, so I kind of thought you might be going over the maps a little more, but that's okay. Looked like part of my, it looked like my backyard was in a more serious flood zone, I'm not sure how to phrase it, and in the 2009 map. And now, in the 2019 map, so there was a blue area and a brown area. And it looked like the brown area was closer to the ocean, so I thought that was a more, a higher risk.
Well, the risk, it's hard to say without looking. If you want, you know, you can always come by and we'll make you a map of your property and what the differences are.
My house, my property was divided between a brown area and a blue area, and now it's all blue. So, it looked to me as if it was a safer zone, a somewhat safer zone. I might be reading it wrong. But I was wondering, what would change? I mean, it's just, I knew, oh, I'm sorry, you answered, it's more precision.
Yeah, and from what I remember in the Cutler City map, I mean, if I'm not mistaken, we had a reduction in the actual size of the flood zone.
That's my question, yeah.
And more of an accurate delineation, but I, from what I looked at just visually, it looked like there was, was less flood zone there in Cutler City. And from what we've gotten from FEMA, overall, there was a large reduction in the houses that are in the flood zone.
I found it interesting, in your staff report, where you pulled some numbers in some, what was it, 737 insurance policies in the city, and for premiums of some $475,000 in premiums, and then claims, 44 claims and 78 on flood shirts. So, it, thank you for doing that, because it kind of personalized it. To me, that worked out to roughly a $644 premium on average for flood insurance. And I think the Obama arrangement called for an 18% increase in premium cap for flood insurance.
Yeah, and that was, you know, I'm not really familiar with the history of those adjustments, but it is, I know, and I've heard from a lot of individual homeowners about their flood insurance rates going up very high. And from what I've experienced in a number of trainings I've been to with FEMA is they're reducing their subsidies. For a long time, FEMA used to subsidize old homes that were built pre-78, before we joined the flood insurance program. They were subsidizing those policies. But I think just due to the financial constraints that have happened with the flooding, I mean, not actually really in Lincoln City, but I think primarily in other parts of the southwestern states, they've ended up reducing those subsidies, which does impact our policyholders as their subsidies go away, and they're, they're having to face the real cost of what it means to develop in those zones. And that's also kind of part of why looking at lowering the insurance, the insurance rates for people is so important nowadays. And on some homeowners, that 5% or 10% can have a large impact. I think it's also important to note that all of these standards make flood insurance for the individual homeowner who builds. Say, somebody who was to theoretically build a brand-new home in Cutler City, by following all these prescriptions would have, just in their individual policy, would have a much cheaper insurance premium. And any homeowner who buys that home from them in the future would have a cheaper flood insurance. Great.
Any other questions of staff? Great. All right, thank you, Weston, appreciate that.
I hope I answered all your questions. If you have, anybody is always welcome to come to the planning department and look at the maps. We do have paper copies. I know we publish the maps on our website as well, but you can hold the real ones and look at them, or we can make anybody a flood zone map of your property if you're interested in that. Just let us know.
You know, I do see one other note that I made when I was reading in your staff report. You indicated that no financial impact. I found that interesting since this, I guess the question is, who is it directed to? Because certainly, a homeowner would be, or a commercial, the owner of the property would be impacted, because they have to make additional improvements, lose livable space, but not the city? And that must be how that question is...
Well, yeah, there's no impact financially to the city. I'm not, which part of the staff report is it?
I don't remember.
But I think, I know in part of it, it's, you know, a lot of what we focus on is trying to balance increased costs of adhering to these standards with the long-term savings on insurance policies and the greater good of the community. There is no financial increase in the obligation for the city itself as a governmental organization, but... but most of these, these changes will realize actual savings in the long run for an individual homeowner who pays the extra couple thousand dollars to make, say, this freeboard modification, they would recoup that cost savings over time.
Right, in a premium.
But I think that's also, it's referring, it would be referring to both of those aspects.
Sounds good. I just wanted to put you on the spot.
That's okay. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Weston. Very good. Good report. Now's the time for, if anybody wants to give testimony regarding this subject. I didn't see any sign-ups, but that doesn't preclude anybody from coming up, but I don't see anybody jumping at the opportunity. Is there any comments from representative of public agencies? With that, seeing none, entertain a motion to close the hearing and the record.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion to close the hearing and the record, seconded by Counselor Casper. And we have then a ordinance on our next agenda item. Any other questions or anything that-
We have to vote on closing the record.
Oh, I'm sorry, on closing the ordinance. All those in favor of closing the hearing and the record, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed with a nay? Hearing none? Thank you. Any other kind of questions or, we can wait for the ordinance, which is, turn the page, Mr. Attorney, what do you have for ordinance number two thousand nineteen twenty-five?
Your Honor, Counsel, there are three changes I need to tell you about. Well, actually, I think you received the communication from today for, with DLCD, but the first change was they wanted us to add some language back, which was basically, the city of Lincoln City ordains as follows, but we pointed out that that's the ordating clause of the ordinance, and it's in the ordinance, so they, they relented on that. The second change is that there was a sentence which was moved under paragraph B, which was not supposed to be under paragraph B, so... The, the, okay, so this is under-
What page are we on?
On this handout.
Oh.
Yeah. The language being removed is, the applicant, or, sorry, the language being moved down below paragraph B is, the applicant shall be required to submit a conditional letter of map revision, C L O M R, when required under L C M C fifteen sixteen four forty. That language, I'm trying to find the page. Yeah. Sorry, I'm gonna have to look it up. Yeah, I just don't know what page it's on, because my computer isn't cooperating. Okay, I believe it's on page twenty, and basically, under the, this last sentence of B is not supposed to be under B because it modifies A and B, it's applicable to A and B. So, the language I just read isn't removed, it's just moved down. The second has to deal with, the following language is removed. The area is designated on a firm as V one dash thirty, V, V O, and V E. And that's- That's in the definition of coastal high hazard, and that's on page seven. So that language is removed, and that's the only changes that DLCD required as of today. So with that, I can, well, there was also several places in the ordinance, and this is just a typographical problem, where there was a, a word that was both bold underline and bold strike-through. That's wrong. If it's both bold strike-through and bold underline, it's not supposed to be there at all. So there was a effort to show changes in going back and forth with DLCD, and we, that's not the ordinance form. So that occurred about four times in the ordinance, but it's not really something that we should read, it's just a typographical error. So with that, this is the first reading of the ordinance two thousand nineteen dash twenty-five, an ordinance of the city of Lincoln City amending the Lincoln City Immiscible Code, Title Fifteen, Building and Buildings and Construction, Chapter Fifteen, Sixteen, Flood Damage Prevention, to update adopted FEMA flood insurance rate firm maps and updating regulatory provisions. Ask for approval of first reading.
Entertain a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve first reading of ordinance two zero one nine dash twenty-five.
Second. We have a second from Counselor Mark. Any discussion?
Just comment that I, when I first looked at this agenda packet, I thought, whoa, this was a lot, and I, I wondered if maybe it would have been appropriate to have a, a workshop or, or something on this to sort of set us up and prepare us. That said, kind of, as I read it through the second time and came to understand that this had been reviewed so thoroughly by higher authorities, it made me much more comfortable with the, the process, so I-
Yeah, I think a forty-three-page ordinance is daunting at times, but yet, once you get into it, you notice, it's not that we have a lot of choices, so-
Exactly.
Once you go to, well, we do have choices. We didn't have to adopt, or we don't have to, and all this stuff, but I, I think for, again, for our citizens, it makes the most sense, adding these few upgrades of building in flood areas. To me, it's a lot better than saying no. There's, at least we're providing choices, so. But I, I shared your initial concerns there. Any other questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mark?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Hoagland?
Yes.
And Kooz?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Your Honor, Counsel, this is the second reading of ordinance two thousand nineteen dash twenty-five, an ordinance of the city of Lincoln City amending the Lincoln City Immiscible Code, Title Fifteen, Buildings and Construction, Chapter Fifteen, Sixteen, Flood Damage Prevention, to update adopted FEMA flood insurance rate map firm maps and updating regulatory provisions. Ask for approval of second reading and adoption of the ordinance.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Make a motion to approve second reading and adopt ordinance two thousand nineteen dash twenty-five.
Second. We have a motion and a second from Counselor Parsons. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Parsons?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Hoagland?
Yes.
And Kooz?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Your Honor, Counsel, this is the second reading of ordinance two thousand nineteen dash twenty-five, an ordinance of the city of Lincoln City amending the Lincoln City Immiscible Code, Title Fifteen, Buildings and Construction, Chapter Fifteen, Sixteen, Flood Damage Prevention, to update adopted FEMA flood insurance rate map firm maps and updating regulatory provisions. Ask for approval of second reading and adoption of the ordinance.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Make a motion to approve second reading and adopt ordinance two thousand nineteen dash twenty-five.
Second. We have a motion and a second from Counselor Parsons. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Parsons?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Hoagland?
Yes.
Kooz?
Yes.
And Mark?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you very much. All right, we have ordinance number two thousand nineteen dash twenty-six.
Before I do the reading, I handed out to you some optional language this evening. This ordinance was drafted because apparently about a year ago, I wasn't here, and Counsel passed a motion to look into providing relief to people who basically were watering gardens with their water, and Counsel wanted to grant some relief to them for the sewer commodity charge, which is what the portion of the fee that they pay based on actual water usage. And the rationale was, well, they're watering plants, and that water is not going into the sewer, and, but yet they're paying an actual commodity charge based on water usage. So, earlier this year, I was told that this had happened while I was gone, and so I, I put it on my list of things to do, and Counselor Anderson asked me about what happened to that, so I drafted this ordinance. Now, because I wasn't here, I wasn't quite sure what the rationale was for requiring this. So, we're basically operating on the premise that it's a valid public purpose to encourage people to have gardens, and that we wanted to accurately reflect our sewer charges, so we would, if people let us know that they had a garden, we wouldn't be overcharging them basically for sewer. Now, I did talk to finance and one of our consultant, when we looked into doing our rates, our consultant had recommended the actual water usage commodity charge for sewer. So, they had toyed with a flat rate or some average rate, but they actually recommended against it and went with the actual. So, not knowing exactly what the reasoning was, I just assumed we were trying to accurately reflect our billing for sewer use, because if you're not using it because it's going in the ground, that's one of our, that's a valid public purpose. The other reason would be to encourage gardens and growing plants, which, you know, and global warming and the Amazon burning, and we, we all, that's a valid public purpose. And because I didn't know precisely what you were going for, I also gave you an option to, a sustainability option. The, well, we want people to be self-sufficient and self-reliant, and so we want to encourage people to grow their own food. So I did give you an option here that would be, the purpose would be more to encourage people to be self-sufficient and to grow their own food. So the first, the language that's before you, and, and I'd like you to talk about which one you'd like to use, so I don't have to read all three options. The first one, which just has some yellow highlighting, is just me cleaning up what was in the original draft in terms of providing a little clarity. This, the, the first one basically is, this is for residential garden use. It's not for commercial operations, and it's basically, you come in, you sign an affidavit before June first, and then we'll replace your actual water, actual water usage sewer commodity fee with an average of your, the first several months of the year as your monthly fee. So we'll substitute the actual number for an average for what your non-growing season bill is. And so it would apply to resident who is basically gardening or using greenhouse or nursery, but not a commercial operation. This is written in terms of residential gardens, nurseries, greenhouses. That's option one, that was the first draft, and the, the yellow just cleans that up. Option two is all in green, it is kind of the green alternative here, and this is the one where we're providing sewer, seasonal sewer commodity fee relief for home crop production. So if you're, you know, interested in, in narrowing this to, you know, you're not growing flowers in your backyard and watering them, you're growing food so that you could be more just, you know, sustainable or, you know, self-reliant, then that's the purpose, if you want to narrow it to that. And then the last option is in gray, and that's the seasonal sewer commodity fee relief for all horticultural uses. So this would apply not just to residents, but also to businesses in the city. So a commercial nursery or greenhouse in the city that's putting the water on the plants and not down the sewer would be able to get seasonal relief from their actual water usage and back to that average. For, and you, you reach back to, you know, January and February and March, and you look at that average, and then you give them that rate for those seasonal months when their actual water usage would be higher. So, if you want to tell me which version you like, or if you don't like any of them, we can punt.
I have a question.
Counselor?
What is, have you done the math? What's the financial impact for each one of these would be different?
I can ans- answer that.
You can?
Well, remember, he's the attorney, so math doesn't come easy for him.
But I-
So-
This is true.
But he should know the answer.
Actually- I would stipulate to that.
Much as I gave Weston a bad time of financial analysis, there was none done on this. However, you know, it's, to me, it's a simple one, is if you're not using the service, why are you paying for it?
I'm, I'm not questioning the reason we have this before, so I was in that discussion. I just want to know what the, what the expectation is for each one of these options financially, and I'll look at the city manager this time.
We did not do an analysis on how much this would cost the city, because quite frankly, we don't really know. We don't know how many people would actually take advantage of it, because it's based upon gardens. I mean, I can think of a few people right off the top of my head that would definitely take advantage of it, but I really couldn't tell you beyond that.
Okay, just curious.
Yeah, I mean, good question. I, I, if I can, the other thing I've, would suggest a change on any one of the three is that we also look at, starting in May, because planting season is actually May, and so that would be one change on all-
And I would like to see six, the, the entire off-season. You know, you're doing six months, and so base off the other six months.
Oh, the average?
The average, not just starting in January. Start November through May.
And then, or up to May, and then-
Right, I'm sorry, April.
From the-
That makes sense, too.
Do, do six on, six off, the average of the sewer for the six off? And I'm absolutely in favor for number three.
The, yeah, that, I am too, quite frankly, because whether you're single-family or commercial, if you're not using the system, I-
And I guarantee you, there'll be somebody here, if we say residential, there'll be one person right away that'll come in here and say, hey.
We know his name.
I know.
Counselor?
Just, just in, I should have probably given you this information before, but if you were to take a hundred, if a hundred people took advantage of this, you'd be looking at about twenty-three hundred dollars a month. you'd be looking at about $2,300 a month.
So much.
But again, there's no way to know for sure how many would take advantage. If it was 10, it would be 230.
The, I think, the other thing that by them having to apply annually, you know, we now have, would have a record, so that would have been easier to quantify. We don't know that right now. The other for me is if you look at that last sentence, we also put them on notice, the affidavit will further acknowledge that a declared water shortage in the city may require discontinuance. So we'd know where to go, is the other nice thing about this kind of a list. Because right now, we don't, you can put out a who's sprinkling their grass or growing a garden, but in an emergency, you'd know.
If I could add just further into the midst, into the mix of the confusion on why it's difficult. If this is intended to encourage gardening and it works, then you would also see an increase in the amount that would come in from your water.
Right.
Because you would, and the overages.
Right.
And that's why it becomes, it becomes more a matter of which fund is going to get the money. But it's really difficult to know. We need a year or two under our belts to figure it out.
Counselor?
I guess, related to the not knowing is we had the report that our water production is, you know, August, September are difficult. That's when the water flow is low. And now we're encouraging people to use more of it. So I just wonder if that's a concern.
Well, I understand.
I don't know if we're encouraging them.
Yeah, I would argue that.
No, we are. I would say we are, is my experience. I know I've done a lot of, you know, gardening and water usage and looked at my bill and thought, ooh, I better cut back. So we are telling people they don't have to do that.
Well, and I think you've got a point there. One of the things I remind people, though, one, by gardening, they're not putting water into the system. So, but even our water, we have a scaled, we have a base rate, which probably is what will go happen in the summertime with these folks. And then we have a usage rate above that. And if it's in the, I think it's July and August, it's even a higher rate. So in our peak time, I'm betting that if they're turned into a heavy user of water, it'll end up being close to, just because you put more water on.
So, I'm sorry, so they're still going to be charged for the water, but not the sewer?
Correct.
Correct. Currently, they get charged as much sewer as water consumption. So the basis was.
I wasn't getting that.
I don't know, I don't remember when it was that we talked about it, but the first thing.
Yeah, it was before.
Yeah.
Would it be prudent to have a sunset provision on this of some sort? Or I guess we could just revisit it when we want.
Well, we'd have an annual, they would have to apply annually, and we'd just see, because we'd see it after a year or two in our rates and what's happening. And I would assume, Ron, correct me, but if there was something really kewompus, you'd come at budget time, right? And that would be a recommendation.
We would know within just a few days as to what the water usage is. Once the billing goes out, we know what the water usage is, and we know who the affidavits are coming in from, so we would be able to track those.
Mr. Mayor?
Let me see if I decide. Any questions? I hate to ignore you. Yes?
Well, I just want, it is, to clarify, it is 200 square feet or more. And it also is a greenhouse.
No, if you look at number three, it's three, it's further down. The gray, go to the gray one.
Gray one?
I guess they're all three.
That's the one that adds businesses into it, correct?
Correct.
The gray one? Now, but it still is.
Was that the one you were? Correct. I'm saying period.
Right.
At all. No limitations. We are saying that through these months, your sewer won't increase.
No less than 200 square feet.
No, no.
No, that's.
Okay, so, but let's clarify, it's not lawns.
They all have 200 square feet.
You missed the other half.
Yeah, I do believe that we weren't talking about watering your lawn.
What?
Because we have to clarify that it is a garden, or it's.
It does talk about a garden, a greenhouse, or, I'm sorry, a garden, a nursery, or a greenhouse of no less than 200 square feet.
Oh, well, that, yeah, to me, it's, if we go to the gray, seems to make what I'm hearing, then, you know, it's commercial. There's no square footage.
It does have square footage.
I see it does, so I don't know why we'd do that.
I would, yeah, I'm not.
And if you have a little garden in your backyard, it might not be too.
Yeah, I have no limit, no limit, yeah. Yeah, I don't think that, yeah. Some people don't have that much space.
Well, I think we're trying to address people using water for growing things.
Horticultural.
Yeah, and so.
So, so the nursery shop that's in a commercial zone in the city, uses public water, that doesn't go into the sewer system, ought to get the same break.
But what if you have people in the commercial zone who want to get a break, and they say, well, I've got these potted plants here. I put this landscaping out here. Are we going to give them a break as well?
If it's not going into the sewer system, the answer is yes.
Right. You should not be charged sewer, you should not be charged increased sewer if your water isn't going in the sewer.
Does that mean everyone with a lawn can come and jump on board? Is that what we're?
You have to come in and apply for this, and then we're going to police these affidavits that's saying, hey, this is what I'm doing. So then it falls on whose shoulders to go check? We're going to have garden police? I mean, for real?
We have some businesses.
It would fall under the same as the code enforcement.
Which you could have a garden or.
What's your question, Counselor?
So.
Yeah, Judy?
Do you have a question?
Oh, I was just saying that we do have some businesses that.
Into your mic, please.
We do have some businesses that could. Again, it all goes down to who's going to come in and do an affidavit and clarify it, that have a lot of lawn and a lot of plants. You can call them a garden if you want, or, you know.
They're growing grass.
Yeah.
And the point, again, a sense of fairness for me, is it's not going in the sewer system.
You're charging people money for things that they're not doing. We don't have a meter on the sewer.
Right.
Oh, well, we do, well.
Well, you're changing what we're doing, okay? The direction I had was, hey, people with gardens, that's what we want to do, and we're going to give them a break on the sewer commodity fee. But if what you want to do is move away from the actual sewer, the actual water standard, because that's what you did. You decided, or rather, a consultant recommended that you use the actual water usage as the sewer commodity fee. It, and it sounds like you're moving away from that. And at this, the direction I had was, hey, something for a garden. And now you're kind of going back to calculating your sewer commodity fee differently, not based on actual usage.
I guess I would say we have a base rate, and that's based on water calculated as you've indicated. Once you move out of the base rate, then the water is not going into the system. So, you know, yes to the base rate calculation if, and it's still horticultural. And I guess my point is, you know, we're getting paid for the water. And if they use more, they're going to see an increase in their bill. But that doesn't mean any more is going into the system, the sewer system. Counselor Casper?
Can you clarify this? All right, so you have a base rate in water, and if you go over the base rate, it will increase. So it means if you water more, your water bill will increase, but it will reduce your sewer.
Your, in theory, your sewer bill would stay the same at the base rate. You know, if you're paying.
Not the base rate. The previous six months.
The average, the average.
Of your sewer rate.
The average.
It's not the base rate.
Base rate or that average.
Correct. So it's whatever you use in the off-watering season, that's your average for the on, for the higher water.
But the water rate could increase, and then the average sewer rate based upon the water usage will be averaged instead of actual for certain months. One goes down and one could go up.
Well, one will go down, it'll hold. The sewer will hold.
Right.
At a plateau.
But your water could go up.
It will go up.
It will go up, because you're going to use more water. Okay, that's all.
So if we're over both now, you're just not going to pay over on the sewer, you're just going to pay over on the water.
Right. Okay. But still, the water could go up with usage.
You'll be paying what you use.
Yeah, you're going to pay what you.
Right.
Okay.
Back to zero over here.
So it doesn't matter what we use the water for, as long as it's not going in the sewer?
Yeah.
Is what you're saying, it's not a garden, it's your lawn, it's.
Any horticulture, if you're going with.
How do you, okay, if you.
If you've got a car wash, if you've got a car wash situation, that's not going to work, because that's not horticultur.
So then everybody still would have to come in and do an affidavit.
Oh, yeah, exactly.
But now we don't if it's not identified as 200 square feet or not. I'm just going to come in and say, I have a garden?
Can I read some, I'm trying to go on a fly here, but can I? I'm just going to read some language that hopefully will capture what you're doing. So this will be the gray language, but I'm going to change it as we're going through. Seasonal sewer commodity fee relief for all horticultural uses. Upon the annual filing of a sworn affidavit described herein with the city finance department, a city resident or business engaged in horticulture will be relieved of the actual water usage-based sewer commodity fee for the months of May through September. In lieu of this monthly actual water usage-based sewer commodity fee, the city resident or business will be required to pay a monthly sewer commodity fee for May through September, which is the equivalent of the customer's average monthly water usage between November and April, say, of the prior.
It should be October. It should be October, if we're looking at a full year.
Yeah, it is, it is water usage, because that's.
That's how we measure it. But shouldn't it be October?
October.
Because aren't we looking at a whole year? Why leave October out?
Yeah, you're right, yeah.
Why leave it out?
If we ended in September, October and April. And I think that's.
Seven months versus five months.
The affidavit described herein shall be filed on or before May 1st of each year, shall be sworn to under penalty of perjury, and shall state that the city resident or business has established a garden, greenhouse, nursery, landscaping or lawn, and leaving out the square footage, and the city water will be used to nourish such garden, greenhouse, nursery, landscaping or lawn. The affiant will further acknowledge that the seasonal reduction in the sewer commodity fee is owing to the fact that water use for watering plants is not entering the sewer system. The affiant will further acknowledge that declaring a water shortage, that a declared water shortage in the city may require discontinuation of such garden, greenhouse, nursery, landscaping or lawn use of water, of potable water.
I'd like to make a friendly amendment to your amendment.
By a vow?
I just, instead of, you said watering plants, could we say vegetation? Because it might include more.
Watering vegetation?
Well, yeah.
I'm okay with that.
Okay.
And this will cover like a more eco sense as well, you know?
Okay.
So I read that language. I'm going to read the title. This is ordinance 2019-26, an ordinance of the City of Lincoln City, amending the Lincoln City municipal code Title 13, Public Services, Chapter 13, 12, Water and Sewer System Rates and Charges, amending Section 13, 12, 060, Sewer User Rates and Charges to add a provision for seasonal relief of sewer charges for.
Vegetation?
For.
Horticultural?
Horticultural use, that's. For horticultural use. Ask for approval of first reading with the changes as read.
Some of.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion with a second from Counselor Parsons. Further discussion? Yes, Counselor Mark.
You mentioned the possibility, you mentioned washing your car. What if somebody has a hot tub in their, I don't, I've never had a hot tub myself, so I don't know what that, you know, is that a lot of water? And someone could use this to skirt, and I don't know where that water goes when it's drained.
You're probably not going to want it on your grass or a lot, so it's not horticulturals? Yeah.
I don't think, and most of them are not really natural water.
I wouldn't see it qualifying.
Well, it doesn't qualify, but how do we know? So somebody.
Well, they have to make an affidavit and.
Sure. Well, so, but they do both. I mean, they have a garden, and, oh, now I get to fill out my hot tub for.
There's three key components in this as it pertains to the enforcement of it. The first is the average amount during the off-season. That's what we will, we will end up having to track anybody that comes with an affidavit, and we will be looking for that they are going in, that it's increasing beyond what the off-season amount is. The second is the affidavit. That's putting people on notice that they are, that if I recall, it states that if they violate, then it's perjury. So there's that part of it. And then the third part of it is that it has to go towards plants, horticultural, which means that what our code enforcement will have to do is when we get these affidavits, and we know what it means to water outside versus hot tubs, long showers, whatever it may be, it will require of the staff to periodically to go and make sure that the watering is taking place on the plants and not somewhere else. But the key really becomes that the first key of enforcement is, how is it comparing in the summer months against the off-season average? That will be a key indicator as to what's happening and will kick in the action of the staff to start looking beyond that.
We're still going to get money for their water usage.
Right.
Period. Whether they're filling their hot tub or taking long showers.
Well, you know, you know, I get that. I have a couple of concerns. One is this notion that we've built these fees around the understanding that if you use X amount of water, you're using both the water treatment plant and the wastewater treatment plant, and that costs a lot of money, and this is how we get paid. This is how we charge for that usage. And I'm concerned that if we cut the fee, that we are impacting the actual amount of money going to the wastewater treatment plant.
As part of the enforcement, we have to make sure that this is going towards plants and not long showers and not overly excessive use of the dishwasher, the washing machine, or a hot tub, because hot tubs get drained back into the sewer system through your.
If I can, but those things would be averaged in over the other month.
That's right. That's why that number becomes a key.
Right.
But if for some reason or another, we see it go up higher in the summer, and it's because of you're filling up your hot tub every other day, and it's being drained back into the system, into the sewer system, that we have to enforce. We have to make sure because it is using the sewer system. So that average becomes the key. And then when we see if it's going above the average on the water usage, then it will require the staff to be looking and making sure it's going towards plants and not going into the sewer system.
Counselor?
I have a couple of other concerns, but go ahead.
Don't we have a general, we've processed X amount of millions of gallons at the wastewater treatment plant every month?
We do have that.
So wouldn't, couldn't we see the ebb and flow of that?
We do have that.
So then, wouldn't we know that if somehow August, we've doubled our wastewater treatment processing, we would say, oh, well, nobody's using that, and they're just dumping in their thing? Do you know what I mean? Like, you could see, you could see if.
I don't know if you could use a full aggregate of the city to narrow it down to just an individual.
I understand, I'm not saying, yeah, I'm not saying that. But as a whole, that the whole thing is working and we're losing money because. because people are dumping into the sewer and not on their lawn.
Yes, as far as, as far as looking at the total that's coming in, as far as looking at the impact to the sewer budget, yes, we would be able to do that.
That's what I'm saying, big picture, from this high, we could see that it's not working at that level. No, of course, you can't say this pipe is more.
I guess the, the other thing, just thinking about it, you, this provision, though annually applied, if there's the change of ownership mid-year or midsummer, you know, would make it null and void.
It does not run with the property.
Right. I don't know how soon we get, you know, for utility change of address or something, but I would, because of one person's habits aren't necessarily the same as someone else's, so...
That's something we'd have to look at on an individual basis. I doubt that's going to be a lot of households when that comes into effect.
Counselor, stay with me.
So, I kind of like the 200 square feet. I'm, I'm concerned that someone with a, what would it be, 11 by 11-foot patch of grass is taking advantage of this and using, and, and, you know, taking advantage of a provision that is really, I see it as intended for people who are kind of really seriously, serious gardeners, who are really doing a lot of watering. And if you have this affidavit that restricts that number, you're reducing the number of people who are going to be coming to City Hall with the affidavit. And it feels like we're adding a burden to the, to the finance department for figuring out these... They're going to have to figure each bill individually? Or is it they're going to be able to have some Excel magic that, you know, that figures this out automatically? And then you've got somebody going down to somebody's house to see if they actually are, what they're actually using it for, and as opposed to gaming the system a little bit? I don't know, I think there should be a little bit of an effort on the part of the homeowner to take part in this.
I was informed by finance that the Cassell can calculate this. So originally, I was concerned, same thing. But they, they indicated that, I was concerned for my personal safety, because finance was going to take me out, because I was making them do all this extra work. But apparently, Cassell can handle it.
Mike?
Counselor Hoagland.
You know, just to reiterate, that this is something that, where you're looking at it from, taking advantage of the system, I'm looking at it from, we're taking advantage of people who are trying to do good on their lawns and the environment and everything, and we're charging them for something they don't use. So I'm coming from the point of the people who are doing things out there, and we're charging them for something that they're not using, period. And I'm not going to support that, and that's where this came from, when it came up, was, "Hey, we're charging people something that they're not doing? That's, why are we doing that?" And so that's where that, where I remember talking about it, and how I came to bring this up, was like, wait a second. This is what's going on? So why, how can we fix that? Averaging and, and still charging them the premiums and the above the usage and all the base and all that stuff, and we're still getting money? We'll still get the base pay of what it is like in the off-season? It's not like we're not making money, it's just saying, "Hey, we hear you in that you're doing this."
Let me...
Counselor?
Okay, I think a number of us have brought this up. I had a constituent ask me about this, you know, very early on. And so I'm just saying, the fairness of it is, I'm more with Counselor Hoagland's thinking on this, because it's fair, and I wouldn't include a, an arbitrary, could be seen as arbitrary, 200 feet. So I, I just think that it's the way to go. But I have a second question, is how are we going to get this message out to people? Will it be a message included in their, in their water bill, just saying something new? Not everyone gets Ron's report.
They, if it would go out the typical way we would do it, Ron's report would be one of those, water bills would be another one. We would, we would use our typical means of getting out, we'd put it in the council report, the quarterly report that gets put out. This in essence won't go into, I mean, we won't see the effects of this until next spring, and we won't see the budgetary effects of this until the 2022 budget.
And then we have the opportunity during the budget season to correct for it.
To evaluate it. I might point out that if you find that there is a really large impact on the sewer budget, then the way you would address this by, and keeping this ordinance in place, is by evaluating what is the base sewer amount.
Okay.
One more, I'm a little... This is okay, but the language about acknowledging that a declared water shortage in the city may require discontinuance, I wonder if declared water shortage is a little harsher than it needs to be? I wonder if there's some, is there a point short of a declared water shortage that the city might be concerned that there's too much water, that there's something pending, you know? I can see a water shortage around the corner, and maybe we need to stop this policy now before it gets to be too bad, is that making sense?
Well, yeah, your point, I guess, is when do we, when would we send out a notice asking for a public volunteer compliance with reduced water outside? I, I don't know.
For the last four summers, we have really been tying our actions to what the state is doing, when they are declaring it and then comparing what our water sources are with what the state is seeing elsewhere, and when they're declaring it. So we would continue to follow that pattern and look for the, and we have found, for example, that when the state has come in and said, "There is a concern," we've checked, they've issued data. We've checked our data against that to see if we're running into the same problems. We've done that this summer, so...
Mr. Mayor.
We would continue that process.
I think we also have something in Public Works has numbers that, you know, they, I don't know what they call them, but when we bump to a certain number of usage, then they would alert you, I would guess, that we've hit that number, and that would be in another, in addition to what the state's doing, because ours is just...
Chapter 820 of, of the code addresses water shortages and gives the council the ability to, one, impose, well, request voluntary measures, and then, two, in the event of a serious water shortage, impose certain things, including restricting or prohibiting outdoor water use as determined to be appropriate. So when you guys think it's appropriate to shut this down, you can do it, obviously.
And as far as staff coming in and making a recommendation, it would be, as I've already discussed, looking to the state, looking at where our water supply is.
And the nice thing would be developing a report, or at least a listing of who is doing a lot, obviously. So, so we have a motion with a second to approve the reading, first reading, as reread, amended. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Anderson?
Yes.
Casper?
No.
Hinton?
Yes.
Hoagland?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yes.
Mark?
No.
And Parsons?
Yes.
Your Honor, counsel, since there was no, two no votes, we'll bring this back at the next meeting. Sounds good. Thank you very much. Thank you all. Moving on with the agenda, we have an application for a sustainability committee. There were three vacancies, two applicants. I guess that, before we go to that, it's my understanding there were two other applicants for these three slots. And I'm wondering out loud why we wouldn't wait until those other two had been interviewed, so that the Counselor Mark and Counselor Parsons have interviewed the first two, that that way you could make your recommendation, giving the, a sense of all four, assuming all four sit for an interview? I concur. Is that...
I was hoping you'd say that.
Okay. And Kathy, does that foul up more than usual that we do to the process? Okay.
We'll take care of it that way.
So, and Counselor Mark and Parsons would like to stay on that, and then bring, bring back all four. Okay?
All right.
But we do have an application for Driftwood Public Library. We have three vacancies, I know one is a student. And we had one applicant, and Anderson and Mark interviewed this applicant. And I'll let Counselor Mark take it.
Thank you. Yeah, we had favorable reaction to this applicant, longtime city resident, interesting background. Mr. Foman was particularly interested in veterans' issues, thought the library could provide services there, and...
Like a background in journalism, too, which was what kind of brought him...
I didn't hold that against him.
No, I remember that.
And, yeah, so I, we would, I would recommend his appointment.
We both would recommend this applicant to the public library vacancy, one of them? Let's see, how do we, do we need to form a motion?
There's a potential motion.
That'd be great.
Kind of on me, I'll, I will move to point Robert Foman, you don't pronounce the P, to a city resident position on the Driftwood Public Library Board for a partial term that expires June 30, 2022.
Boy. Partial term? Is there a second?
All second.
We have a second. Counselor Parsons? Yeah. So we have a motion to approve the appointment and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed with a nay, hearing none, thank you. All right. Now we got a little bridge building.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we're here to ask that council award a design-build project contract. This is to replace the West Devils Lake Bridge on West Devils Lake Road by the hospital. We first came to you and asked for an exemption from public contracting rules to allow for us to go to a design, actually a progressive design-build rather than a design-bid-build. And we successfully advertised the request of proposals, and we received four proposals. I have to say, on a bridge this size, compared in the bridge world, it's relatively a small bridge, the level and the, the level of experience and the experience in the teams that proposed were really impressive. I mean, any four of these could have done a nice job, I would be comfortable with all four of them. So it was a very difficult decision. The proposer, the, sorry, the review committee did have a ranking based on the proposals, and we also interviewed them, all four. At the end of the discussions and comparing the scores, the reviewing committee is recommending HP Civil Incorporated to be awarded the contract. So the way this works is ODOT has given us a grant. They committed to 1.193 million, and we share an in-kind of 10%, 10.27% of that. So as we go along with this project, we'll get reimbursed by ODOT based on that ratio. Okay? So far, just to note, we have been reimbursed $19,947, because we've done a lot of upfront work, we've done the geotech and some survey work. So I would, I'd like to also mention that one of the reviewing team members was from ODOT Bridge Group. And so should we get into the process, which is about a 30% design, we'll know what the costs are very, we'll know if we're in the ballpark, for sure. We'll know if we need to play around or with, if we can, we'll, we'll know where we are relative to the, to the 1.19 million. If we need to go back to ODOT, it's a very long process, and you really have to prove that you need that money, and there's nothing, there's no other way to get around it. So with having someone with ODOT there, seeing how we've come along with this, select, you know, selection of the way we're going to deliver the project, the team we selected, we just feel really good about the city's risk as not to be hanging out there with, you know, a big overrun on a bridge project. So that was a whole, one of the, one of the main points, reasons why we went with progressive design-build. And this team that we selected has a lot of experience with this process. They do their own construction, they have, they self, they self-perform, and they have engineers in the same company, so they're a pretty tight-knit group. This is one of their niches, small bridges. So I'm pretty comfortable, I'm very comfortable recommending HP Civil to be awarded the design-build contract. And you can, open for questions?
Counselor? Counselor Hoagland?
I was just, this was, ODOT's involved because, why?
Well, it's an ODOT grant. Yeah, they're funding it.
Was this the switch that we, we were going to get something done on the highway, and we said, "We won't do this, and then we will do that" a few years ago? Was this this bridge that was somehow? I don't, I...
I don't remember that.
No. That may have been the head-to-be trail pedestrian bridge. We swapped that for, this is part of the overall ODOT Bridge Assessment Program, completely separate, we've just been on the list, that bridge has gotten worse and worse, it finally got bad enough.
You never were underneath it.
To the point where we made the...
In the wetland?
We were in the kayaks.
Oh, okay.
Oh, really? Okay. Yeah, so you saw underneath it?
We did.
Yeah, so, so we, the, the plan is to, to keep the road closure to as small a window as possible, realizing that could cost a little more. So we will be looking at the cost benefit of road closures and, versus the type of construction, how long we can keep a lane open. We'll be talking to the ambulance facility and the hospital and get all of their buy-ins. We'll have a year to do this, because the permitting will take about a year. So construction will likely not start till next fall.
So we'll be digging up West Devils Lake do for a water main, get that fixed up, and then dig it up again for a bridge. Block that area.
Well...
Kind of one after another, though?
Yeah. Yeah. There will be impacts this summer, this, this, yes, there will be impacts and then more impacts.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Stephanie, there isn't a construction contingency in...
No. Because...
Then we, I mean, something's going to happen, this...
Well, there is no contingency, ODOT will not, there is no contingency, that doesn't really come into play here. We've got a set amount from ODOT, we cannot go over that. And so anything that we go over, if we should, would have gone over that amount, we would be, we'd have to pay for it.
Okay.
What we're going to do is know so much at 30% that we will know if we're going to hit that number or not. And we'll know enough to start looking at alternatives and seeing if there's any way, you know, we can for sure make that number. We'll have a lot more confidence. And then there's, you have a, with this process, you don't have a real, you have a more team-oriented role with the designer, the contractor and the owner. So their books are open, we know what, how they're coming up with their number. So their books are open. We know what, how they're coming up with their numbers, their markup is, was part of their proposal. So, so transparent that we'll have these, we'll have some good working numbers early in the process and hopefully, and, and the, the goal is to stay within that number.
I like these type of projects, design-build.
I'm just wondering what a 30% design means, but maybe everybody knows that.
It's where you have most of the major components. You know what type of foundation, how you're going to construct it. You can do your staging. You can figure out how you're, how you're going to construct it in terms of traffic control. They were talking about prefabbing some things. That costs more money, but it's, but it takes, for example...
Faster.
It take, but yeah, it's faster. So all of these can be identified in alternatives during the 30%. Yeah, so you really nail down, 30% is quite a bit. It really is. The rest is just the details, details, details.
Counselor Parsons?
I was just going to ask, are we going to underground our current utilities that are on that bridge?
We are undergrounding our water line. Natural, Northwest, Northwest Natural is considering undergrounding, or they may also be on the bridge. They'll know soon. We'll, we'll have to know that. But yeah, but ours will be underneath. And then those will be the only utilities on the bridge, if, if gas stays.
Any other questions? Stephanie, I, going back to the original first question from Counselor Holton, why ODOT? And a million two is a grant. This isn't a state highway. So I, I always appreciate grants and assistance on this. But I, I guess it, I'm throwing out, do I take this as a compliment? Because one, we won the dance, got the grant. And then their confidence in us for you to manage the project in this way?
Well...
A quick yes is good.
Yes. We'll go with yes. Thank you for that prompt because, you know, I'm, yes. Yes and yes. Yeah. I gotta get home to my dogs.
It is National Dog Day.
Yeah, that too.
All right. Any other questions, concerns? Entertain a motion?
Make a motion to approve this election of HP Civil Incorporated.
Second.
We have a motion to approve with a second from Counselor Parsons. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Casper?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Holton?
Yes.
Kuss?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Ben Anderson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thanks, Stephanie. City Manager?
Just like to come over here so I can use the projector. The next item we had was number K-11, interview scheduled for committee interviews. We do not need to do that. We found that with a little bit of adjustment in our process for scheduling interviews, we can handle that as staff. And so we'll take care of that. And we'll not need to have a discussion on that tonight. The, that puts us to a discussion on the fireworks and our Fourth of July activities. As with last year, or 2018, following the Fourth of July, we had a meeting with various interested residents. It gave us some suggestions on things that we could implement to help improve the problems that we have with illegal fireworks coming in from the, from outside the area. We know that those are generally coming in from the state of Washington. And they are being shot off throughout the city, on the beach, in the neighborhoods, on the streets, and so forth. Based on the information that we had received in 2018, we implemented a few things that took place this year. The biggest activity was our Keep It Legal, Keep It Safe campaign. This is, you can't read that. I'm sorry, it's not in focus. The top part is really, it's really there. For example, this is the flyer that we produced that discussed what's legal, what's not, and warned people to, please not to bring their activity, or their illegal fireworks. We did try very much to strike a balance of saying, we still love to have you here and don't go somewhere else. But please don't bring your fireworks. That proved to be quite a challenge. This was primarily a, both a flyer for locally, but for out of the areas, primarily a social media campaign and really Facebook. We distributed 1,500 flyers throughout the community. We had 20 large signs that were posted at all beach access of essentially what you saw on the previous slide. And then our Facebook campaign ran through the, both the police department's Facebook and the, the Explore Lincoln City. On the police department, we sent out the Facebook ad itself. It reached almost 546,000 Facebook accounts. That simply means, in oppression, means it was on their account. By the time you get down to it, of those, 5,625 actually went from their Facebook account to our police department, or to our webpage that explained what is legal and what is not. And then, when we talk about Facebook through Explore Lincoln City, we did not go out and purchase spots. But yet, through their regular advertising, we saw an additional 1,300 people who came to our webpage to look at what is legal, what is not on that. From a financial standpoint, that's a pretty successful campaign. It was under a dollar per click. By comparison with some of the other campaigns that Explore Lincoln City, where they've used Facebook, that's about half the price. So it turned out, in all total, this was about just under $5,000 for this campaign. These are some of the comments that we received. They ranged anywhere from "great" to "I'm taking my money and going away, you bunch of fascists." And so, "How dare you take away my right to blow things up." So it was all over the place. This was actually, not only was helpful as far as the Facebook campaign go, it also kind of was helpful as we looked at just in general, how do we use social media? And should we have comments? It's something we've tended to shy away from. We're rethinking that, and a lot of it's been based on this. We really promoted our activity down in Taft. That's where we, the message we really were promoting was, don't bring your illegal fireworks in. Come and enjoy the show. And, and we went beyond just advertising the activities within our own city boundaries. So we had the parade that was in Glen Eden. We promoted the Devils Lake Fire Show. This is the second year that we had live bands. And I thought you would be interested in this for just a few seconds. I had a lot of fun filming that. The filming's terrible, but the music was good. But anyways, it was a very successful time. Despite that, though, we still have problems with fireworks going off throughout the city. For enforcement, we had 34 police personnel that were involved with this. It included all of our own police, but also from the other agents, agencies that you see there. And you can see from here the activities that took place. And I won't go into a lot of those, other than that there's one statistic I heard, but was never able to confirm, that we had one streaker up in Rhodes End as well, so. Ms. Counselor?
If I could just interrupt, the fireworks seizures, I thought it was 800 pounds. And last year was 885. And that only says 300?
That might be correct. I'll verify that to make sure.
Only from 30 people. It's 100 pounds a person.
I think that's wrong.
Yeah, I will verify that to make sure. But anyways, when, it's always interesting when I'm out talking with people. The information comes back and depending on the person's experiences, we heard a lot that it was horrible. That was a common statement. Also heard from others that said, yeah, it was bad, but it was better than the year before. So, and everywhere in between with that. We brought our group back together again about, oh, two, about three weeks ago and asked and looked at how we did and what we could do to improve upon this. And that's what I really wanted to spend a little bit of time on.
I see one other thing too. Down there under Rhodes End area, and it has the 911 complaint calls. There was also a non-emergency complaint calls. I know that because people are calling me as they're calling the police. And I also, and I made two of them, non-emergencies, so...
Those went up into the 213. We didn't pull those out...
Oh, you didn't.
For this report on the non-emergency calls from just Rhodes End.
Tried to get the word out, non-emergency number.
Right. So there were really two areas in which our, our group asked to, we, we improve upon our actions. The biggest area was in the area of enforcement. And I have to say, the number one request that we received from our, from our residents was more ticketing, more actual actions up into, including arrests. One of the thing, one of the issues that comes out of that is that it is a crime to have illegal fireworks, which is a misdemeanor. Because of that, we have asked our attorney to work with us and look at, is that true? Okay, because there's been some, there's been some, some work that's come on, some emails that we have recently received. Richard's done a little bit of look into it, but I need more time with those. What we really want to do is to try to create an offense that isn't necessarily a misdemeanor. Okay? So that we can go beyond just confiscating. There's, there's always issues that are associated when you're, when you, if somebody voluntarily gives up their fireworks, you do not have to follow the rules of evidence. If you are giving tickets, if you are arresting, then you follow the rules of evidence. That creates a much longer process. So one of the things that the chief and Mr. Appicello and I have talked about is what can we do within our ordinance to give the police more flexibility? Is, does it already exist? And if it doesn't exist, then what do we do with that? So that is something we do want to pursue. Yes, ma'am?
Sorry, I don't mean to keep interrupting, but Ashley, our city attorney, did weigh in on the citation, if it's criminal or if it's lesser, like a traffic ticket. And you found that it's already available for a range, and so I don't think it's just criminal. I think that was something that we thought it was.
I, I did send an email. The, the fact is, it is a crime. It can be prosecuted. The police can follow criminal procedures and send it to the DA. They can follow criminal procedures and send it to me at the municipal court. They can follow, you know, non-criminal procedures because we've adopted everything by reference and reduced it. Now, the error that, you know, you all got an email was, that's not the only way. It's also, it's a crime. It can be prosecuted as a crime. Or we have the option to prosecute it as a violation because a couple of years back, the Tawanda Fuller case caused us to add that option to the code. And police haven't used it, but I have sent all that information to the police chief, so.
So we have the option.
That is some, yes.
So that's new news.
And that is something that we want to follow up on to allow that to take place. The second, the second item that we came up with is coordination with our volunteers. Specifically, some pre-activity work. So that we, we found that our police officers didn't know all of the volunteers that were, that were out there working. And so we want to do some pre-training with them, so there's coordination with the, with the volunteers. The third area, which is the one that I found very fascinating, is the better use of the Rhino vehicles. We have one that we use. Primarily what we use that is to pick up, is to pick up fireworks. There's a call, some, we're confiscating fireworks. We drive down. We pick up, pick those up. There's police officers who are driving it. What, the information that came back to us was that the people that are coming out, they know the vehicle. The vehicle picks it up. They drive away, and the fireworks come out. So the question is, can we, first of all, make the vehicles look more like police vehicles? Can we put lights on them? Can, in, such as in this case of one community, they, the red and yellow really identifies it as a police vehicle? And can we use more or increase the patrol on the beach of those vehicles? So that you see them more regularly, which doesn't give people time to, once they leave, to come out and, and set off their fireworks. That also would include extending the time in which they're out as well. We did find that there were a lot of activities that were going on well past, or fireworks going off well past the time when the show ended in Taft. And they were still going off. So that was one that I found intriguing. We'll be exploring that, to see if that's the, if that's a possibility. The next is the change in the nature of the show itself. In other words, should the city be setting off fireworks? There's a couple of options that I've seen other communities do. One that is becoming a little more popular is the use of drones. We did look at some price tags on that. Right now, for $25,000 that we spend each year on fireworks, we get about a 20 to 25-minute show. It's about $1,000 a minute for fireworks. For a drone display of 25,000, from one of the vendors we talked with, that's 250 drones. For an eight-minute show, that will change three times. So think, think of a marching band, except you're looking up at it. They, they move around, they stay there for a couple of minutes, they move around, they stay there for a couple of minutes, and so forth. And the total amount of time for the equivalent of fireworks is, is about eight minutes. Another, another option that can be available to us, and this would require us to move our site, is the projection onto a surface that shows a show. Two years ago, three years ago, when I was attending a conference in San Antonio, they, they did this where they showed the history of San Antonio on a Catholic cathedral. And it was really a wonderful job of, of the story of San Antonio as it's being projected. Anything like that requires us to have a surface. There are places where that could take place, and it's the cliffs on the beach, where there's not, where there's less amounts of vegetation. But it would require us to move the site and location from this let's be, because there's really nothing to project against on that. That one really is going to become a budgetary question. And that would come really before the Budget Committee and then the City Council on whether or not, how you want to spend your funds. Do you want to continue to spend them on fireworks, or do you want to put those funds towards something else? So with the, with the biggest, as I mentioned, the biggest request that we receive from our residents is improved enforcement. We will likely strengthen our advertisement that says, please don't, please don't come because you will be cited, you will be something or other like that. And then the police will have to step up their enforcement and use all of the resources. Right now, it's primarily been just simply confiscating voluntarily the fireworks and not, and not issuing any kind of citations or arrests or anything like that. So, that's... So, that's essentially our report. There will be more that we will come to you as we finish putting this all together. But that's essentially where we're looking at going with this.
Are you okay with some, any questions? Any questions, counsel? So, how about, I guess, I mean, we've gotten letters, and we've heard the association standpoint, and, and I appreciate that. I guess, you know, at this point, when, when would we get some maybe recommendations of changes? Would that be later? Because I'm assuming some of this is going to be still sifted through?
Yes, there's still some work we have to do on it, and there's really two deadlines that I'm kind of looking at with these. One, of course, is a discussion in the Budget Committee itself. But prior to that would be when we have our annual priorities meeting, which is about February.
Because budget would be too close to.
Budget, you're really looking at it a little bit farther down the road.
Yeah, mine was on that same line as our next steps, because we just had a clarification from the city attorney about the ways in which we can cite people for violations. And so, now that we have that cleared up, that's something that maybe my question, I guess, is can we move forward with that? I mean, what, what do you need from us to actually enforce?
The, the first thing that I, I need from this is a little bit of time. I just read that email today. So, I have not had a chance to sit down and talk about the practical application of that with our attorney or our chief of police. And so, I need a little bit of time to discuss that with them and make sure that we all are on the same page with it. If there, if there are changes that need to be done in the ordinances to make this happen, we will bring it back. If there are not, which apparently that, that may be the case, then you're really going to, what we will discuss with you is the implications that you will find with increased enforcement.
A question. Do we do anything beyond the Fourth of July? There's so much that goes on beyond the Fourth of July. Well, not even New Year's. I mean, it goes all into August.
You mean fireworks going on?
Fireworks, as far as, do we do any enforcement on that, or do they just go?
As far as.
I hear them, and I have to chase my dog, but.
Not to the extent of the Fourth of July where we're going out and actively looking for them.
Okay.
If we see them on our patrol, we will act on them. And then, of course, if we receive complaints that come into the police department, then we act on them. But we, we certainly don't have it hyped up to the same level of patrol that we do on the Fourth.
So, do we respond, I know we hit the beaches, but what about the lake? There's a lot that goes off at the lake, too, that is not.
Of our third, of our thirty-four, of our, well, really, it's thirty-one, because three of them are dispatch. Of our thirty-one officers that are out, they're not all on the beach. They're also patrolling the other parts of the city.
Thank you. And I'd just like, if I could, just say that, to kind of underline the idea that this doesn't just happen, you know, New Year's and Fourth of July. Just last Thursday, there were two huge fireworks that went off, just not too far from my home. And, and it happens all year round. And, and that's, it's harder, it's harder to manage that kind of thing. But I think if we do the things that you laid out here, I think that's going to really make a big dent in some of these other things that we hear during the rest of the year.
Okay, did, counsel?
Say we don't like to write tickets because it's a crime. What other crimes do we just let go and don't write tickets for? I'm, I'm frustrated at that answer, to be honest. The council made it a priority to enforce code, and we enforced less this year than we did last year. Why aren't we writing tickets?
I don't know that I have a good answer for that.
I guess I, I would try, is I'm not sure the, to make it a priority, enforce code. I think the issue was to try to soften the negative impact of fireworks. And I would say actions were taken with the number of staff and personnel and education. Those were the kind of things.
I'm comparing these numbers to the numbers I saw from last year, where we confiscated a lot more, seemed to contact a lot more, and wrote tickets.
I'd say then the education probably worked.
We have not written tickets in, at any time in the last five years.
There wasn't three tickets written last year?
Pardon me?
There wasn't three tickets written last year?
Not that I recall.
That was the number I got. Okay. I got the wrong numbers.
Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
You know, we're, we're trying to fix something, right? We're trying to get illegal fireworks out. And it's, I think it's hard to, how do you know that you're doing a good job, right? So, you could say that we didn't do as much as last year, but then we could say, you know, well, we didn't have to because last year we did so much, and less people did it, right? So, how effective are we? And what's our effectiveness goal? And so, it might be difficult, you know, we're saying, why didn't we write tickets? And how difficult is it for the police force to actually do this? And I think there's a very real human thing going on here where we can sit up here and say, yeah, write more tickets. This is BS because, you know, dogs are going crazy, and it's echoing in Rhodes End, and it's terrible and awful. But at the same time, to be on the beach, to get to the people, to write the tickets is a very, it could be very difficult. I don't know how that is. And so, I'm just saying, what's the goal? What is the goal here? And how are we going to say that we are effective in managing this fire, you know, illegal firework thing? You know, because people are going to have fireworks that are legal also. And those are gonna, those are also going to upset animals and dogs and things like that, and they're going to bring them to the beach. And so.
Turn is loud. I can tell the difference.
I understand. I understand. But what I'm saying is, what's the goal here? To have zero? How, how effective? I hear you. I hear it. But what I'm saying is, you know, how are we going to get there with everything that's going on? For, for real? I mean, because we're, we're already pulling people from different communities and different things. And I mean, is it literally going to be volunteers at the beach accesses with, you know, radios saying, you know, section two, we got guys coming in with this, and then dispatching people like that? Like, how do we get there?
I hear you. And we're making contact with people. It's not, we're not going to get everybody. But we are making contact with some. And what's the point of rules if there's no enforcement or bite in the end to get you to stop doing it? Isn't that the point of a rule or a law? Is to change your behavior is, is, was all?
Right. But at the same time, what's the goal and direction? To reduce the number of firework, illegal fireworks? Is that the goal? Or is the goal to write more tickets?
It's to reduce the fireworks.
I think one's going to have the.
Yeah, and I, I think we're talking about process, but, you know, at this point. But I, I think what it says is we've got a lot still to do. I think we've learned long ago that, you know, just because you pass a law or an ordinance, is people don't take personal responsibility. And, you know, I, we could talk all night on this, and we're not going to.
I have one more thing.
No, we're done.
No, I have one more thing.
No, we're, we're done on this. We've had plenty of time.
We live right next to the Cascadehead Marine Reserve. I was reminded of that by an Audubon board member this weekend. And under the state code seven-thirty-six dash zero-two-nine dash zero-zero-four-zero, it states under section one subsection C is prohibited to pursue, injure, or molest any wildlife or disturb their habitats.
Your point being, if we're going to.
The, the big kabooms, the big mortar type of things. I mean, there's more incentive, I'm saying, for us to be proactive in a, even bigger than what we're doing.
So, we'll keep going. Thank you, counsel.
Sorry, I would have slipped out. There was a lot of comments here. But I did have the personal somewhat embarrassing, somewhat chagrined experience of, it's not quite how I want to put it. Evidently, for years in Color City, there have been a group of people who legally, with fire marshal's approval, set off at the, after our city display ends for twenty-five, twenty-five, thirty minutes, a very large display of what looked to me like illegal fireworks. I, after I pursued it, I found out that it was actually legal. And, and it feels to me that the fire marshal's approval of this undermines really what the city's trying to do. And I, I don't know how you can tell people up the beach that they can't shoot off their fireworks if this group is doing it legally. And I, I wish there was some option we'd have to try to put some restriction on that.
A certain communication from the fire marshal, it, when grant, when permits are granted would be helpful, would be a starting point. Okay, so we'll expect here more yet to be resolved.
The next item we have, which is K-13, is a request that came in during your citizens' form two weeks ago from Scott Torrance. He correctly mentioned that some businesses that do cleaning, carpet cleaning, things like that, are using our septic receiving area that is in the parking lot behind the hardware store in, in Taft. That parking lot and that septic receiving station was built ten years ago. And it was installed for the purpose of providing a, an area for tourists that are coming in with RVs where they could, where they could unload their, their, their RV sewer and put it into the system. There's some discretion that's built within our ordinance or interpreted within our ordinance that allow, would allow the public works director to allow those to be used above and beyond just tourists. And so, for the last several years, I could not find a time when it actually began. But for the last several years, we have allowed the businesses to put gray water into, into the septic station there. There is a def, there is a definition of septic. It is sewer. It is contained in our ordinance. And it states, material from residential and commercial, non-industrial septic systems and portable toilets collected within Lincoln County. And then, within the ordinance, it lists the, the composition of what it is. It is not gray water. Gray water is something you would find coming from your washing machine, coming from carpet cleaners, wetbacks, things like that. Does not. We do allow septic haulers to dump into our septic receiving area in, at the wastewater treatment plant. And we do charge them on a per gallon basis. The question that's really before you is whether or not you would like us to look at our ordinance and apply the same standard to businesses using gray water as we have with businesses that are dumping septic into the, into the city sewer system. You have, within your packet is an email that I received from Mr. Travis Kittle, who is the president of the Associated Cleaning Services. So, you've had a request from a citizen. If you'd like us to follow up on that, please give us direction. If not, then we'll continue our practice as is.
Being a RV dumper myself, I, I would like the city to maybe give some guidelines for businesses coming in to use the RV, like carpet cleaning, whatever. My concern is the chemicals going in there, if there's some kind of a pH balance, or even possibly giving the people using the dump a permit. So, the city has identified who is actually using it. And if there becomes a question of the chemicals or the pH imbalance that's toxic to people, that the city could go and identify and eliminate that contamination, that would be something I would be concerned about.
Okay.
Ron, I guess, you know, I appreciated the letter from Travis Kittle. And he makes a good point on double taxation and water usage. But I'm, I'm sure not all of his work or the work from these gray water user, collectors are in the city. So, there is amount of their, you know, service that is outside the city. Thus, I guess my immediate reaction would be some kind of annual fee just because they knowingly do business outside the city. I don't know what percentage. And again, you know, I, I don't know distinguishing between gray and sewage is, you know, it goes to the same plant. We spend the same electricity, manpower, equipment, all that kind of stuff. But the argument on the, the septic dumpage, clearly, it is not coming from Lincoln City because of the small number left of septic systems in the city.
Yes, what's the typical, if an RV, what's the typical dump volume of an RV?
I don't know that.
So, against the number of RVs that are using the facility versus, so that volume versus the volume of carpet cleaners dumping it? If we're trying to gain money, if we're trying to make a fee, if we're trying to collect fees, is the volume of RVs, which we're not charging them, right?
Right, it's a courtesy.
It's a hundred million, whatever it is, a million gallons versus fifty thousand gallons. I don't know the difference. So, we're trying to quantify lost money, right?
I'm not. At this point, I, I think.
You're saying, collect a fee for the, for the carpet cleaners who are coming in. But we're not charging any RV people anything to dump there.
The argue, the citizens' argument was, you know, that commercial businesses, some, i.e. septic system pumpers, have to pay at the transfer. Gray water folks don't have to because they do it here, you know, at the RV park. And, you know, then the argument is, well, they, the gray water folks use water from the city that they, they get paid for, so it's. I'm, at this point, I'm just trying to balance that argument. I, I can throw off the septic folks and say, sorry, you know, you're still going to the treatment plant. The gray water folks, it kind of blows their argument for not paying something using the facility, some facility, whether it's a treatment plant or the RV place, because not all their business comes from Lincoln City.
I understand what you're saying.
So, that, that's, so that if, if, if there was an opportunity for revenue, opportunity, I could see something there, is all I, and that was my only point.
I know. I understand you.
So, then I guess, help me understand.
I want to know how much volume RVs are dumping.
We don't have people there, though. I mean, that's, I'm also, I'm also trying.
I understand, though we don't know how many people are, we don't know a volume of carpet cleaners dumping their gray water either. That's the point.
Got you.
Is we have no idea.
Whether it's one.
Who is doing it how often? So, we're going to make an ordinance for something that is often, isn't often. He's adding hundreds of thousands of gallons of gray water. He's costing the city twenty thousand dollars in processing? What's the point against the RVs and that quantity of this free service that we are already paying for? We have no idea.
So, I guess that might be a, a question of, do we, people who use, go direct to the treatment plant, we know who they are because they pay. It would, to the counselor's point, it'd be interesting to see if gray water users go direct to the treatment plant now.
Right. And if we're going to make an ordinance, let's put, have somebody, if we're going to change the law on something that we have no idea about, I'm not comfortable, put somebody out there to see who does what there.
Or a camera might be a better.
Fine, absolutely. Put something, because there's no meter there, there's no dump. Because there's no meter there, there's no dump volume, there's no anything. We don't know anything. We have one person coming in saying they saw somebody do something once.
Yeah.
And we're gonna change the law.
The email that I'm...
Well, no, at this point, we ask, we direct the staff to bring us some information, you know, and that stuff. So, you know, we're having a discussion...
Absolutely.
To see if it moves to the next point.
Okay, but if I hadn't said anything, we are gonna, you know what I mean? Without the other balance, is what I'm saying.
Yeah. And that's good.
Right.
So, I, I guess the real question is, now that you've got, you've got your questions answered, we, we asked staff to bring us some information in response to the complaint.
Can we ask the companies, the, the gray water companies directly and say, hey, how often do you use it? We're just trying to figure out what's going on.
What I've heard from you tonight are several questions that you will want to have answered before the city staff tries to prepare anything to, changes to an ordinance. So, if you're so inclined, we will try to answer those questions. And any others that we might be able to anticipate, or if you have any, you wanna give me a call or send me an email, a text, we'll add those to the questions. But at this point, what I'm hearing is more information is needed before the city does anything to adjust its ordinances. And including, and so, and so what I've heard is, what kinda chemicals are, is the makeup of gray water that would be going into that? How much? Do we have any way of knowing how much is being dumped from, into, into the receiving station at the parking lot that's sewer versus gray water? Do we have any way of knowing how much is coming from outside of the city? And those will require us to talk with the, with the service providers as well, so...
Do we have a way to make sure that it is gray water? Because I know, like, Service Master does other cleanups where sewer pipe broke in my neighbor's basement, they came and cleaned that up. I don't know where that waste went. Kind of a situation.
Good.
Okay.
All right. I will plan on bringing that information back as we, as we're able to gather that. The final item that I have is under the purse, the state's program to match funding for the purse. I sent, I included in the packet just some analysis, but it deserves some clarification. Under the, under the program, the state will match twenty-five percent of what the city pays to reduce its liability for the pensions that we have. Our current liability, based on year ending 2017, is ten million four hundred and fifty-one thousand three hundred and ten dollars. The, um, the state will match up to five percent of that, um, whi, um, which would be five hundred and twenty-two thousand five hundred and sixty-six dollars. That would be twenty-five percent, so we would then pick up an additional seventy-five percent, which would be two million ninety thousand two hundred and sixty-two dollars, or a reduction of our debt by two million six hundred and twelve thousand eight hundred and twenty-eight dollars. The next question that came up is, when can we take advantage of it? The state has two deadlines associated with this. The first is September first, and you can qualify to apply for that if your liability is at least two hundred percent of your payroll. Ours is a hundred and forty-nine percent, which means that we're not eligible to apply until December first. That's actually, in one way, a good thing, unless the money gets all used up. But it gives us, there's some assumptions that are built into this that will affect the savings that the city could have. The, uh, by, um, by reducing our liability, the saving essentially becomes in that it reduces the amount of contributions we have to make each year. It would, if we were to pay that two-point-six million dollars, our contribution rate would be reduced by two-point-five percent. It would go from eighteen-point-eight-four to sixteen-point-three-three-four percent. That would give us an overall net savings of two million four hundred and thirty thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars. Okay? The net is the twenty-year difference in that savings minus the amount we have to contribute now. Now, one of the assumptions that is built into this is the state's seven-point-two percent earnings rate on its investments. If that holds, then all of their calculations are correct. If that is too low, then our savings gets even greater. If that is too high, then the amount we save gets reduced. Okay? And so one of the things that we want to do between now and December, when we have to make this decision, is to run some scenarios at different interest rates to determine what, um, what is the real savings, uh, if that assumption does not hold. It also gives us a chance to, we haven't really done this yet, to look at what, over the last few years, has the state actually been able to earn on their investment? Has it really been seven-point-two percent? Has it been higher? Has it been lower? Essentially, we want to, we want to test their assumption and see if it's true. We also looked at, um, what happens to the savings of a little more than two million dollars if you just invest it. At, at a current rate of four-point-three-seven-eight-two percent, it, uh, it is an interest earnings of two million four hundred and thirty thousand dollars that you'll come up with. So there's a lot of scenarios that we want to take a look at and bring that information back to you, so that we can present it in a little more cohesive manner. We also need to bring it back to you in the context of what happens if you take two million dollars out of your, um, out of your budget? Where does it come from? If you recall, we have six million dollars, but that is, is in a unappropriated, which means we can't necessarily get it unless there's a major emergency. So it would have, it would impact our, our, our budget. So we need to bring back information as to where that money would come from, if you wanted to, to use the ultimate max of, of what the, the state's willing to, to pay. So there's more information that we wanna bring. The biggest information, though, is that our, um, our liability is not sufficient enough to allow us to take advantage of this on their first payment of September first, so we have to wait until December before we can act on it.
More to come.
I think that's all I have, Mayor.
See you, Attorney.
Uh, you received a forwarded confidential communication from Attorney Sterringer with a recommendation. We can only act here in, at a public meeting. Do you wish to make a motion to follow Bob Sterringer's recommendation?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion to recommend the, um, to, to take the recommendation from, from him.
Hon Sterringer.
Yes, please.
I'll second.
We have a motion to take the recommendation of Hon Sterringer and a second by Counselor Any questions? Everybody's read the material. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed with an aye? Hearing none?
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I had.
How about, uh, public comments? Joe?
I love Joe.
Thank you for staying. Uh, Counselor Holblum, comment?
I, yes. When are we gonna update our website, Mr. Chandler?
Um, Explore Lincoln City has been updated. Ours is not budgeted for this year, it won't be until we look at it for next year.
Okay. Is that it?
All right.
You'll be here.
I'll be here.
Counselor Mark? Nothing?
Uh, very nice time at Regatta Park. Musical instruments...
Yes.
Were wonderful. I was a little, there was some terrific music that, some people that came down from Portland, two groups, and a lot of people left before they played, so I, it would've been nice to have a little bigger crowd for them. They were terrific.
Is that it? Counselor?
I agree. I have a couple of things. One is that Counselor Mark and I attended the League of Oregon Cities Small Cities Meeting, and there was a lot of discussion, but one thing is, we were able to thank the Toledo Mayor for loaning us their two police officers on the Fourth of July. That was a nice thing. And there seems to be a theme, maybe we could catch on to this, with banks being given to cities to use as, um, bank buildings. Thank you. Bank buildings. Ooh, I forgot where it is. It's getting late. Yeah. Bank buildings are given to cities or may, being made very available, at least to two cities, Walport and Yawhott, where their, um, their city hall will be moved to those locations. But that was kinda cool. Maybe we could get in on that. And, um...
You know any bankers? High up?
Not me. And I, um, also, um, wanted to say that the next Small Cities Meeting, this is for the other counselors here, is November twenty-first. And the issue that we'll be discussion, discussing will be emergency preparedness. And I let Ken Murphy know, because I suggested that he be one of the speakers. And then the next, um, this is for Kathy, the next LOC Small Cities Meeting will be held in Lincoln City, the one that following that one on, so it'll be February twentieth. Very, and we don't have a discussion topic for that one yet. And then I have a question for our city manager about where are we in the negotiations in transferring Logan Road to the city from the county? If he was listening to me?
Yes.
We have a, we have a price tag that we now have associated with that, which is a little over a half a million dollars. That has been sent to the county, and they have requested a meeting. And I believe that is scheduled for the first of next week.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
There. Counselor Parsons?
Um, just wanna say a quick thanks to our library and Parks and Rec Department. I was down at Regatta yesterday, and they were having a barbecue for their volunteers. Nice to see our departments recognizing their volunteers.
Great. That's good. Judy?
Um, I have been away, and in case you wanna know where the land of nice is, it does exist, that's the theme. It's in Minnesota, where the men are strong and, the women are strong and the men are, what, good-looking, and the children are all above average? But I, I did, yeah, the land of nice.
Land of nice.
I did come home and, and find a piano at the beach access in Lincoln City. It was kind of interesting. And, um...
Yeah.
Yeah. It, it made quite a conversation piece. So it was quite an addition to the community, either yea or nay, but it was very interesting.
Diane?
I was happy to get my music on when we went down to Regatta grounds for the opening. It was nice. It was very nice. The drums were fantastic.
Huh. Great. Um, I had, if I can jump on that, Saturday really was a nice day in the park, music in the park, um, a good partnership with Rotary and the City Parks, City, and then turned out with the Oregon Children's Music Festival. But it was, it was so nice to, to tie at least three, four different music-oriented events at the same time. And it, it was disappointing of, not as many people, but I think as this continues, uh, and it's planned to, there'll be more. Great use of the bandstand, and that was helpful. And Judy, yes, the pianos, five pianos around town, and they're playable. Evidently, I heard from the artists, they're bringing them back next year, um, and starting in Lincoln City and having them painted by the Lincoln City artists next year. But they travel around the state, so it's quite a, we're, I think we're building an arts, music arts, goes back to our, our schools. So it's easy to start, hard to get rid of, so that's good. Coffee with the mayor tomorrow at My Petite Suites, nine AM. That means coffee with the mayor, the mayor's not buying. Continues to be a habit of others. But I welcome any of you that wanna join me, feel free. And with that, let's go home.